I haven't signed it already.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm waiting for the official clock to hit six o'clock. Okay, it's six o'clock, we'll get started here. For the April 11th Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission. Charlie, do you want to swear everybody in now, I guess?
That'd be fine.
If everyone signed in to speak tonight, if you could, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the statement you're to make tonight to be the truth to the best of your information and belief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so we need a commission business approval of the March invoices.
I'll second it.
Okay. We've got a motion by Ms. Mizell, a second by Mr. Smith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, pass. For the record, we are missing Mr. Stone.
Stone.
Tonight, so Mr. Stone has not arrived yet.
He is having surgery, so he will...
Oh, so he will not be here? We'll say a prayer for him. Next on the agenda is approval of the March 14th minutes, so if you've had a time to read those, I need a motion as well.
So...
So, motion by Mr. Mifflin. A second by Mr. Caldwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, approval of the April agenda. So, I need approval...
Make a motion to approve the April agenda. Do we have any?
Yeah, we had two items to add to these agendas under other business.
Okay.
Item B, a zero law line discussion. And item C is subdivision revocation, part of my revocation.
Okay. So with the additions, we had a motion by Mr. Mifflin.
Second.
No.
Oh, did I, no?
Byron.
Oh Byron, I'm sorry, I thought, I take that, so, motion by Mr. Moran and seconded by Mr. Vest, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Items for postponement or withdrawal. Joe?
We did have a postponement, written request to postpone the Cherry Blossom Village amended master plan. We got it earlier in the week.
Okay.
We did talk about workshop about postponing Phase Nine too, because Phase Nine was tied to the amended master plan.
Gotcha.
But, I don't know if the applicant's here.
So, I think we did say, decide on Monday we were postponing.
I think that one would be a postponement by the board, not the applicant. They may want to speak to it, I'm not sure.
I think, I thought we made decision Monday to postpone both.
Yes.
And I'm getting a lot of nods, so they're postponed. So if you're here for PDP 2019 Cherry Blossom Village amended master plan and PSP 2019-01 Cherry Blossom Village Phase Nine, those are both postponed. There is though, on the agenda, the Gulf Town Homes of Cherry Blossom, which is Phase Six, and we'll be hearing that tonight. So if there's any confusion, you can grab Joe and pull him out in the hallway and he can explain which one you're here for, in case you think you are or aren't needing to be here, so...
I didn't say which one, that's P...
That which, yeah, that one is the PDP 2019-13, it's Gulf Town Homes of Cherry Blossom Phase Six, which is a preliminary development plan and subdivision plat for Gulf Town Homes of Cherry Blossom. Thirty-two single-family or attached townhome units located on East Ravinia Drive, west of Lanes Run Creek, northwest of Old Oxford Road.
Riviera.
Well, what did I say? Riviera. Right?
You said Rivina.
Oh, I'm sorry, Riviera. I said that Monday too. Okay, so we need a motion for the items for postponement. I need a motion. Motion by Mrs. Mizell?
Second.
Second by Jeffy Beach. Mr. Caldwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda, we do have, I think, at least two that I think were eligible for consent. One, and we'll go through it, I guess, FSP 2019-11 Sanderson, Sanderson Property.
We actually need to hear that one.
Okay. Alright, don't worry about it. And the other one that was eligible, but I'm sure there's people here for and against, is Slantia Public House renovation, so we'll be hearing that one as well.
Yeah, we do...
Is there another one?
Yeah, Item D and E are also eligible, there's no variances, they're both in the business park.
Agreed, yeah.
They're both approved by the board.
Alright, let me read through them. PDP 2019-14 Titan Project, it's a preliminary development plan for a 4,500 square foot building located at 120 Technology Court. Is anybody here against that application? If not, okay, we can then need a motion to approve or deny consent.
I did have one question for Joe, which, which one of these two business park applications had the, had the request to do some early grading without a road?
Yeah, they've actually both requested early grading, the business park didn't have an issue with early grading for either.
They didn't, okay.
Yeah, so, Crew Building Services is in Phase Two, so that's the one that, that I was concerned about, this timing, that grading with the Phase Two expansion part. But they, they didn't have an issue with that Titan Project, it's just by the, last ECTC campus.
Okay.
More than I'm right. They didn't have an issue with that either.
Okay.
We didn't, consider it necessarily variances, but they are a request for a revocation.
As long as the park doesn't have a problem, we should be okay with that, Charlie.
I think so.
So the first one, I need a motion to approve the Titan Project.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Vest, let me, hold on, let me pull that one out. It's PDP 14, so a motion by Mr. Vest.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Wiseman. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, it passes. So, if anybody's here for Titan Project, please step up and see Mr. Perkins to sign. No one's here?
No.
Oh, there we go. Second one that's consent eligible is PDP 2019-15 Crew Building Services. It's a preliminary development plan for twenty suit, or twenty suite industrial building in Lanes Run Business Park located at Corporate Drive. Anybody opposed here, opposed to that tonight? Application? Or want to hear it, I guess? If not, I need a motion to approve PDP 15, the 2019-15.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Vest. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. So if you're here for the Crew Building application, please go up and sign there for, with Mr. Perkins. Okay, so those passed, and the others, okay, so then we'll jump right into the new business. FSP 2019-11 Sanderson Property, it's a final subdivision plat to divide one tract into two acres, or two tracts. Creating one five acre tract and another 6.823 acre remainder tract located on White Oak Road. Michaela?
Thank you, alright. As you said, the property is zoned A1 agricultural and all the surrounding zones are also A1 agricultural. For, the project site is 11.823 acres and it's located on White Oak Road. I'll see if I can give you guys a better idea. Elkhorn Creek is, North Elkhorn Creek is right there, and then this is White Oak Road, and this is the property that we're looking at. So they are proposing to create two new five, two new tracts, one five acre tract and a 6.823 acre remainder tract. The reason that I wanted to, to discuss this application is, on the, on the subdivision plot, they are showing an existing entrance here and then a proposed entrance here for parcel one. These are some pictures of what they're labeling as the existing entrance, and staff does not feel that, that qualifies as an existing entrance. And the, the entrance itself doesn't meet our site distance requirements, as you can see. This is the view if you're looking west, and then this is the view if you're looking east. So we would just ask that on the final subdivision plat, that the existing entrance isn't labeled as such, and that they do propose a new entrance for parcel two. So with that, I, I am recommending approval of the application with the following conditions. Really, the one condition that's out of the ordinary is that we are requiring that the staff engineer is able to verify the proposed locations. Not sure if you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Michaela?
Can they have a, you're basically asking them to, to move that existing entrance. So, is it possible to move that down and have a single entrance and then it divides after it gets on the property?
Yeah, I, I think that would be our preference, just because there is only one real spot on the, on the road. Ben might be able to speak to that more.
Not in this location, though.
Right. At another location?
Yes.
On, on basically around the property line?
Yeah, where the proposed entrance is here.
We went out and we assessed, there was a stake here and a nail in the pavement of the road. And we looked at this when I did talk with JR, Brandon Burke, supervisor, and we feel that this one is a sufficient location, good site distance pathways. They could do two entrances right here with an access easement split off.
Okay.
But we do not support an entrance, at least in that location.
Any other questions for Michaela? With the applicant, come on. Come up to the lectern, I'm sorry, to the microphone, sorry. To the lectern, right, Frankie? And state your name for the record.
Tina Sanderson.
You need an address too, right, Charlie?
Oh, yes, that'd be fine, yeah.
So you name an address, I'm sorry.
My address?
Yes ma'am.
1100 Lloyd, Lloyd Road, Georgetown, yeah, Georgetown, yeah.
Are you okay with the recommended changes?
I met with JR out there and, and I thought, 'cause see, Shay Walling's driveway is right there with the existing entrance, so I don't know why my entrance would be a problem. Because the neighbor Shay Walling...
Is right next to yours?
Is right next to it, so I don't know, I mean, I guess as long as I get it approved, is that the only thing that they're having a problem with?
Yeah, I think that's really the only thing that...
That's it, it's just, it's blind.
Ben, do you want to get up to the microphone and speak? Just make sure we get you on recording.
Ben Krabs, planning commission engineer. It is, yes, that location, I don't know when the other entrance was approved, or, or what situation, and it is farther down from the bend, so it may allow a little more in that location, but it is, we can allow somebody to...
Right.
To build a new residential type entrance coming out of there with the liability and safety risk.
Is that the only thing that they want me to change, because I've, I've done everything else?
I think everything else is...
And that was it, if I come back, then, as long as I get that changed, I'll be good to go then?
Yeah, the recommendations are on the back stated one through seven, which hopefully you have a copy of that, so as long as you complete all those recommendations, you'll be fine.
Okay.
Assuming, assuming it's, gets approved.
Are you okay with maybe doing one shared entrance in the middle between...
If I can get it approved, I mean, I can do that, I'll, I'll talk to Pat.
You wouldn't be the first person that's, that's been affected by that, because it's...
No, I, I know that.
Site distance is a big problem for a lot of people.
Yeah, there's some dangerous curves in county, that's for sure.
Right, yeah, absolutely, okay.
Any other questions for the applicant, anybody? Alright, so I, I guess I would entertain a motion. So a motion by Mrs. Mizell, to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, all in favor? Say aye? Anybody opposed? Alright, you're approved, you can step up to Mr. Perkins and sign the proper documentation, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is PDP 2019-12 Slantia Pub House renovation, preliminary development plan to construct a 1,240 square foot covered pavilion located at 320 East Main Street. Is that you again, Ms. Michaela? If you're a busy lady.
So this is preliminary development plan to construct a 1,240 square foot cover pavilion at 320 East Main Street, where the existing use is the Slantia pub. It's zone B3, which is our central business district and the, and R2, which is our medium density residential. Where the new development is proposed, it would be in the B3 section of this parcel. The surrounding zones are B3, central business district, and R2, medium density residential. And the site is 0.33 acres. As far as the development plan, let me see if I can pull it up here for you. I can go over this, so this is the surrounding zones I was just talking about. So, on this side right here is where the R2 is, and then this is just an aerial view of what's already existing in the pub, there is an existing courtyard out there and some landscaping. The covered pavilion that's proposed would be right around this area, there. So this is the development plan as proposed. The board, it's already been to the Board of Adjustment. The side yard setback here would be required to be 25 feet because it is adjacent to a residentially zoned district. The Board of Adjustment approved it to be reduced to five feet for the proposed covered pavilion, and now they're here before you tonight to get approval for it. So the proposal is meeting our max building coverage and other setback requirements, except for what was already approved. As far as the site access, there is an access easement that comes off of Mulberry Street that allows for the existing parking. The proposal would reduce that parking, so it would take away the four existing spaces there, so it'd leave no parking on the site. It is meeting our landscaping requirements, the only thing is that typically a commercial zone that's adjacent to a residential zone does require a 15-foot landscape buffer area. This proposal is showing that being reduced to five feet with a six-foot privacy fence, which the zoning ordinance does allow as long as the planning commission approves it. The six-foot privacy fence is already existing out there. And with that, we don't have any minimum parking requirements in the B3 zone, we also don't have any minimum canopy requirements in the B3 zoning district. So, with that, I am recommending approval of the application with the following conditions, they're all pretty standard, I didn't add any additional requirements on it, so...
Any questions for Michaela?
Yes, ordinarily, when you own a piece of property, you want to put a building there, you just get a building permit.
Yep.
Why is this not just that, as opposed to calling it a preliminary development plan and coming before us?
Um, well, because it is in a commercially zoned district, and they're expanding beyond the 10% of their existing building area, so that's why we required a major rather than a minor. But any new development in a commercial district would require the plan.
Good question. Alright, any other questions for Michaela? Thank you, Michaela. Would the applicant like to come up and speak?
Oh, I'll speak.
Okay. I'm sure there's a few people in the audience who would like to speak either on behalf of the development, or, you know, if, if you don't, Mr. Nun, I have a question for you. So we talked Monday about the, well, state your name and your address and...
Matthew Nun, 320 East Main Street, Georgetown, Kentucky.
Thank you, sir. Question I think we had, and we talked about on Monday, was what would the structure look like? How, you know, is it brick, is it wood?
It's a wooden structure, much like you would see at Scott County Park or the Great Crossing, Water Street Park. Bull Spring, I think is the name of it.
Well, is it, will it be closed on any of the side?
Yeah, so what we've done, so just a wooden structure, a roof, just like you would see in those locations, the difference would be, on each side, the eastern side and the western side, we're going to enclose that to provide additional noise barrier for our neighbors.
Nice, okay. Thank you. I just want, yeah, because we didn't know exactly what you're building, etc. Anybody who wants to speak, again, either on behalf of this applica, application or against, please come on up and state your name. And what we do generally is if there's questions or comments, you can make them, and then what we'll do is allow the applicant to respond to those questions or concerns, as well as, Michaela can also answer some questions if, if need be. So again, anybody want to speak on behalf or against, please step up there and state your name and address, and we'll go from there. And if you, if anybody's here who hasn't been sworn in, I think we might have gotten a couple late people who showed up, but again, state your name.
Hi, my name is Griff Ray, 123 Watermark Path. And we've lived in Georgetown now for about six months, I started working here a year ago, and we live downtown Lexington, in an area that's very similar, before we moved here. A lot of restaurants, a lot of bars, a lot of, the, the neighborhood kind of turned over, and it was a really positive thing for our real estate value, it was a really positive thing for the community there. And so, when we moved here and we found Slantia, we were overjoyed to find a place where there's a sense of community, and we have done baby showers there, we've had at least a dozen church meetings there. We did church services for Georgetown College there, and it's, I think it's a treasure for our community. The relationships that have been built, the support that's been built has been phenomenal, and that's coming from a pastor watching that happen. I think it happens better at the pub in some ways than it does at the church sometimes, unfortunately. So, we, we are excited about the possibility of expanding that and having it as an opportunity for more people to gather, to build community. You know, I know with Georgetown, the key is, we want, we want to have a small-town charm, but we also want to grow as a community. And so, I, I think what, what places like Slantia allow us to do is to still have that charm, but also be a place that can grow and embrace growth in a way that's healthy and that promotes positive community. And neighbors getting to know each other and support each other, and we, we've just had a phenomenal experience. So, as someone in the community, we just want to say how appreciative we are for the pub, and what it's meant for our life, and for getting connected and involved. We know dozens of people that we wouldn't know otherwise if not for that place to, to come together and to get to know people, so we just think it's a phenomenal idea.
Thanks Pastor Griff.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
My name is Audrey Carr, and I live two doors up from the pub.
What's your address?
East Main Street, 356 East Main.
For the record, thank you.
And I believe Mr. Nun indicated he lives right next door, but actually, he doesn't live downtown.
No, I think he just stated the business address.
Okay, okay, so I just wanted to clarify that that's his business address, and not his residence.
For the record, that is his business address.
For the record.
Thank you.
I want to share my residence if y'all want.
The issue...
We're good.
I'm not here to get into it tit for tat, I'm here to express concerns about the plan and to maybe get some clarification. Some of you read the graphic, and you know I testified about a concern about traffic problems on East Main Street. After hours of what I consider first shift, that used to be a pretty quiet and not a lot of parking traffic, and people having difficulty getting to their homes. I'm privileged and I have off-street parking, but the front of our house is also a, obviously a very logical place for people to park. And so, I see that every day, not just once in a while, it's, it's seven days a week, we have parking issues. And there's already, and I had spoken to, the noise issue. Now I know that the owner testified, he walks by our house and the traffic is worse than the noise from the pub. There may be times when it's six o'clock in the afternoon, or five o'clock, when all the manufacturing plants, I happen to work at Toyota part-time, so I am very much aware of when there's a overload. So we do get traffic that's naturally a part of people coming and going to work. But, the issue I have is if you increase the density of the number of people, I mean, clearly, the reason they want this, and we've had that conversation, is to bring in more people every day that they can to the pub. And that would be primarily in the evening hours, my guess is, because most people work during Monday through Friday. On Saturdays and Sundays, maybe it will be during the afternoon hours. But if you increase the density, you increase the traffic problems. If you decrease the distance between the residential properties, and really, I shouldn't, I'm two doors down, Charlie Hoffman is right next door, there is nothing in between. So the noise is still going to be there, and it's going to increase, in my opinion. I have no proof of that, any more than someone can say, well, my buffers are going to eliminate it, and I have a question about that. So I'm really concerned about how many people increase, is the, the goal of that? How many people can you possibly get on a 1,240 square foot pavilion? Now, I heard in your, that you've exempted the height of the fence, the barrier, the sound barrier. I've tried to do a little research on that, because I've talked to a civil engineer about what happens with roads. And from what I can gather, you must have at least a 12 to 15-foot sound barrier in order to stemme the flow of sound waves. And you also have to have a, if you're going to use shrubbery, it has to be a particular level of shrubbery. It has to be dense, it has to go all the way to the ground, it cannot have big open spots between the trees, because that eliminates the value of it as a sound barrier. From what I heard, the privacy fence, and it's simply that, the privacy fence that was put up just recently between Charlie and where this pavilion would be, is a standard thin privacy fence. And I heard you testify, I believe it was six foot tall. Well, it, all the literature I saw said a six-foot fence will not eliminate sound waves. And again, even a thin six-foot fence with shrubbery, unless it's a particular type of shrubbery barrier, will not eliminate sound. I looked at the noise ordinance, and it's not just what I am quoted in paper saying, the noise from a generator sitting right on East Main Street traffic area. I mean, it's off the lane, but right next to it, plus the people, plus the music. So we're not talking about, this is someone's home, building a patio, so that you can have a few people come. So my question is, on the recommendation, as I understand it from staff, eliminating this, just requiring a six-foot fence in some shrubbery without defined, doesn't seem to me to meet sound barrier requirements that would otherwise be applied. So we're not talking about a situation where we're going to have a few people. Their goal is to make money, I understand that. Their original business plan was no live music, Mr. Nun told me that himself. It was to be a comfortable social club, we could go have a drink, you could play cards, you could have conversation, and then it gradually has grown to be more of a bar-type of thing with live music. And I'm not saying that people don't have a right for that. That horse got out of the barn a long time ago with bad decisions, when it was zoned the way it was. That's not why I'm here, I'm here to stop the bleeding, and I wish you would give some consideration. I wish you would give some consideration. We've got people on East Main that frequent the pub. That's their right. That's not what this is about. This is about protecting the integrity of the historic district. They've made modifications to the historic building. I don't believe any of us came out and fussed about it, but if you went at the historical register and looked, some of those things probably don't comply. That's not why I'm here. I'm here because I want to know, what are the protections, if you approve this, against further eroding the peace and tranquility on that end of the street? The other thing I had a question about was, when you eliminate, they had four parking places? Now, they're even eliminated. Where does increased traffic park? Do you have any responsibility, as a group, of looking at not just this segmented business, but the precedent that you're setting as relates to requiring sound barriers of businesses that border, there's no intervening space, that border a residential area? And at that, homes that are in the 1800s that you can't replace? Questions. I would hope you'd give consideration to some of the downside. This is more than about a person and a business. This is about a precedent that you're setting relating to sound barriers, density, and traffic.
Thank you.
Want me to respond?
Well, you wait till the end, because we'll, yeah, take notes and we'll open it up back to you. And Michaela's going to also answer a few questions for us. Anybody else want to speak in favor of or against? Step on up to the lectern and state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Glenn Burns. I live at 601 East Main. That's the White House crossing the church. And my wife and I own Birdsong Quilting, which is at 228 East Main, which is a block away from, half a block away from the pub. So, what I would kind of like to touch on is not so much the noise, but, but to pick up off the idea that what we're really talking about here is a historic area and the nature, the characterization of that neighborhood. So, since I have to walk back and forth to get my exercise from the house to the shop, I go past the pub a lot. When you look at the pub, when you step back and look at it, what you see is an area where families are. You see friends there. You see them meeting, having drinks and playing cards. You see them on the back enjoying the music. What you see is a building that has developed a community area around it. And if you step back and you look, Slante Pub is pretty characteristic of Georgetown. It promotes community development. You should just look at the community service that comes out of there. We had Thirsty and Theology, so there was church services, which I've never gone to in a pub before, but we had church services last summer there. What is being presented here is a chance to grow that community. So, I, I'm kind of stepping back. I wouldn't want your job, having to pick between all the different choices. But what you really, but the lady was right. What you're really doing here is setting a precedent on how you want the community of Georgetown to look and react as it grows. And so, I would be in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anybody else want to speak? Step on up.
Martha Smith, 355 East Main Street. I am hearing a lot of positive things about the business, and I'm, I'm not a negative to business, but this is a precedent. And it's a precedent that doesn't make a lot of sense to me that moving this variance and not requiring sound mitigation on that side is a problem. It's a problem because I don't know why taking 20 feet and moving it in that direction isn't another, another step that's, that's not mine, I'm glad to say. But I'm not sure if this is such a good idea, why you need 20 more feet, why you need to change your plan from this. I mean, you're still asking for density. You're still changing what is the residential character. Right at that edge, there is no cross-street right there. There's nothing dividing it. You're removing, you're making changes, accepting a variance, and you're allowing for one side to get everything on this and the other side of the coin to get nothing on it. And there's a question about that, that I really want to raise, is, it's often difficult to put yourself in somebody else's shoes. And I certainly appreciate somebody's being here six months and feeling really good about what they see. And I, I have, was born here. I didn't grow up here the whole time, but I never did not have ties to here, multiple ties to here. I walked back and forth there between my grandfather's office and there every time I was in town. I played on the sidewalk. These are, this is 60-plus years, not six months. What, what this precedent setting is doing is probably a lot more than any of us can picture, but unintended consequences are unintended consequences. And thinking through, why 20 more feet? Why music? Why noise changes? Why taking away parking? It doesn't necessarily create more community. It's one way it can be done, but there are a lot of ways to create community, and that's to take in every point of view, not just the ones presenting that are going to be making additional money on it. There's one more thing I want to say. I did sit in on the plant, on the workshop, and it followed that there was a meeting on the noise ordinance. At the workshop, I heard that there was no elevation of what this building's going to look like. And then I did hear from Mr. Nun that he had presented everything. And so, as a member of the public who's concerned, I don't know where that difference is. But again, it wasn't brought up again, that there's a picture of what this pavilion looks like, what the construction is, what the roofing material is. If it's, if it's going to be a metal roof or something like that, it's going to add to noise. And he says he provided it, and you all said you didn't get it, and it's not been presented. So, I think we're looking at, at least a picture that may not be complete.
We'll ask that of Ms. Michaela, as well as Mr. Nun afterwards.
And these, these were questions that I wanted to ask, and that's why when I left my phone number and asked to be called after, on Monday, didn't get a call. I'm doing it in public.
Keep taking notes, Mr. Nun. I'll...
Thank you.
I'll rush you 30 seconds because there's a, there's a simple misunderstanding.
Okay.
They planned...
Come on up to the microphone, sir.
I think, not the entire two of their arguments, but are based upon one misunderstanding. They have not eliminated the requirement of a landscape barrier.
Right.
They've reduced it. We still have to put a landscape barrier in place, in addition to the opaque fence. So, the landscape barrier that's been a topic of conversation thus far is still in place.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to come up, sir? And we'll get you next. Again, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Noah Western. I live at 517 East Main Street. Excuse my appearance. I came off of work and I had no idea what I was getting myself into. I would have thrown on something a little bit nicer. I'm a, I'm an army veteran. I served two tours in Iraq. And I see all the glazed overlooks. You guys have heard enough about everything. This is America, and it's built on business and capitalism. And Georgetown is a great place to live because I can walk down the street and get something to eat, go, go to a bar. You know, there are all sorts of businesses down there. I think that what we are doing right here is, are we going to restrict and continue to restrict small business owners from expanding their business? I mean, I don't think that what they're proposing is going to look garish or ridiculous. I don't hear any, anything at 517 East Main Street from, that the traffic of the semis coming down the Main Street is much louder than that. And they're right, you know, it's precedence. Do we want to continue to grow Georgetown and continue to keep it a wonderful place to live in and continue to make it a place where people want to have their small businesses and, and where people want to go to and spend their money? I think that's the real question here. Of course, if I bought a place right next to it, I might be fighting against it. Heck, you know, I don't like the traffic when I get off of work, so why don't we just close down all the businesses, you know, so there won't be any traffic, right? That's it.
Thank you for your service and sacrifices. Sir?
My name's Homer White. I'm at 198 Hyawatha Trail in Georgetown, so I'm really speaking not as a neighbor, but as a customer of Slantia. I'll speak in favor of the proposal. Some of the reasons I have, have already been elaborated by former speakers. It's a wonderful community setting. It's become a hub of many events that are important for the community. Thirsty and Theology was mentioned. I believe there's actually a church that met there for a while. There've been political events on, by both major parties. One of the, one party I tend to organize some of the political events for, and then the other party, when they organize, I drop by to wish them good luck, which they don't usually need because they usually win now. You know, it, the, part of the reason for its success as a community venue, I think, is it's a kind of middleweight position on alcohol. It has the ideal position, which is more than zero, but not so much that it's like some kind of a pickup place. I don't know. Maybe it is a pickup place, but I wouldn't know because I'm usually there with my wife and half her friends. But that, that kind of middleway, that importation of the pub style from the British Isles has been a real breath of fresh air and a real community builder in the town. And I think that's a part of the fundamental value of the place. Now, thinking about the specific proposal for the structure, from a point of view of a customer, trying to think about how this will go, and I'm also trying to think about the neighbors because some of them are friends of mine. What's the likely impact of this structure? As a customer, I think the likely impact is that in the warmer months, the nights when there's not live music and there's very few people there will become nights when there's about six or eight more people there. Because what you want, in the colder months, you're not going to go to the pavilion. But in the warmer months, you're going to want to be out in the back. And there are two times when it's unpleasant and the warmer months, be out at the back. One is when the sun is beating down earlier in the evening, and the other's when it's raining. And so, the pavilion is going to be a spot of kind of refuge for that. So, I think the noticeable difference is you're going to have six to eight more people, four to six more cars on these non-live music nights. Where would they park? That's an interesting question. Main Street is a little bit inconvenient because, you know, on a big night, you have to walk a bit ways down Main Street when you park. My wife and I have taken the parking on Mulberry Street right next to the current location of the planning committee, of the planning commission, the old library. There's actually, it's empty in terms of parking all the way, rest of the way down. And I wonder why people aren't going to start eventually utilizing Georgetown Baptist Parking Lot, which is open to the community during the week and is essentially empty during those hours. So, I think that once people kind of think about where parking is, they're going to find a lot more options. So, I think that what we got here is something that's worth experimenting with. The question of precedent has been brought up, but my understanding is, this is not an actual court that doesn't really work with precedent. In fact, the whole point of Planning, Zoning Committee is not to go by precedent, because if you go by precedent, you end up doing the same thing over and over again and getting sprawl. That you use your judgment and you experiment with things, and after a while, you reverse your position when you find something's gotten big enough. So, I think we're at the point here where this is worth, worth a try as an experiment in how to grow, especially when it's in support of kind of a community-building organization.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else going to speak? Please step up.
Hi. I know some of you, but my name is Candace Whitehouse. I am 27. I am legal drinking age, although I'm aware that I look 12. So, just wanted to put that out there. I have lived here since I was like one and a half, so I've been here for a long time. I've lived downtown since 2010, so seven years. I've lived at the college. I've lived on Main Street. I currently live at 121 Warren Dale Avenue. I have a very different personality. I love people. I love noise. I love all the traffic. I love all of it because I love community. And I love the fact that people are moving and hustling and bustling. And I love when people are talking to each other. And although I'm a millennial, I hate screens. And so, I want people to be visiting and, and sitting together. And so, that's why I like living downtown, because although I'm not exactly right next to the pub, I'm walking distance, so my car does not contribute to the parking. But I love when the, when the races happen or when Festival of the Horse happens and people park around my house, because that means our community's doing well. And that means that we're thriving and that people are getting out of their homes, they're getting off their TVs, they're getting off their phones, and they're coming and being a part of what Georgetown is. Georgetown's not going to thrive if we don't have people in our businesses, if we don't have people contributing, going to functions at the pub and, and being a part. And the pub personally has played a lot of different roles in my life. I run a nonprofit here in town, and they've donated a lot of money to us out of their own pockets, but then also from their business. And they, they don't have to do that. And I know they do that at least once a month for lots of nonprofits in town. And we had an event scheduled out, out on a farm last year for domestic violence awareness. It got rained out because it was raining and we couldn't have it on the farm. I literally called the pub four hours before the event. They said, "Sure, we'll clean out your, our top room. You can have it here." It was awesome. They are so ready to be a part of the community and give back, and they're so careful to be good citizens and good stewards of what they have. One other tie that I have to that building is I used to work in that building whenever it was a bridal shop. And it is a beautiful building. I mean, really. I appreciate a beautiful building. I lived in a 90-year-old home and I currently live in a 100-year-old home. I love old buildings. But when that business had it, that building was not getting the attention it needed. And I was worried for it because I have bought two foreclosed homes. And when it gets to that point, it gets a little scary of, is this, are we going to lose this building? To my knowledge, when I'm in there and when I've talked to Ashley, they're taking care of that building and loving on it and making sure that it's going to, going to be around as long as they have it. So, I just can't say enough good things about the pub. And my vicinity to them is, of course, a little far for noise or traffic. But if anybody wants to park at my house and walk down to the pub, you can. You'll make me happy and apparently make other people happy. But, so I just wanted to speak in favor today.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitehouse. Next to speak, anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Whitney Helterbrand, and I live at 471 Glass Pike in Georgetown. You might say, "I live out in the country, so I'm not, you know, concerned with the noise." Well, I can tell you that cows and coyotes wake me up almost every night. So, noise is not going to be a, just a concern here in town. But I'm here to speak on behalf of Matt and Ashley in Slanta. I would like to encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve this request to expand their facilities. We all know Georgetown and Scott County is growing rapidly. As of December of 2018, the county population was 56,045. By 2025, it's projected that the population will be 67,570. With our population projected to have such a large increase, we should absolutely allow and encourage the expansion of our local businesses, especially those that support our community. Slanta is a great destination for adults of every age. It's a welcoming environment where you can have a conversation, read a book, and even host a meeting. The Scott County Extension Homemakers Association currently has a monthly book discussion group that meets at Slanta, and the meeting spaces made available to them free of charge. They have also allowed other community events to be held on their premises, including trauma-informed yoga, local women's group fundraisers, and educational classes. Allowing these groups to use their space and host events is wonderful, but it does limit the space that's available to their everyday patrons. This expansion can help ease that problem and encourage growth of a local small business. I appreciate your time in considering this request and hope my words encourage you to approve the expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak, either for or against this application?
Hello, gentlemen, ladies?
Hello, gentlemen, ladies, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I feel, feel as though-
Please state your name and address. I'm sorry, Mr. Hoffman.
All right. I'm Charles Hoffman, commonly known as Charlie Hoffman. I own the property, me and my wife, Margaret Ann, who, which, three, three weeks ago today, or yesterday, had a massive brain aneurysm, and spent nine days in, in UK intensive care. And so that's why she's not here tonight, and I'm speaking. Now, when I go, we own the property that is most impacted by the expansion, the proposed expansion. Matter of fact, our property is in, joins the entire length on the west, on the west Ms., Ms. Carr has alluded to the inefficiency of the sound barrier. The fence that was erected is not tall enough for one thing, and it amplifies sound as another. That clock would be where I would lay my head in my bedroom at night, and where you all are sitting is bank, is the bandstand. That's where the musicians play. That's how far, that's how close it is to us and our family. And it, and let me tell you what, when they get to playing, we moved from 406 Bourbon Street, which was right next to the Georgetown Police Department. Many a night, I could hear the music at 406 Bourbon Street. And now, living next door at 336 Main, it's only intensi, intensified. Mr. Wiseman, the question that he asked Michaela, I think it's, that, that statement in itself should disqualify, should disqualify this proposal. Because we are talking about a historic, present, residential district that is being negatively impacted by the pursuit, I guess, of, of more patrons, or, there's no parking now. When I pull out of my driveway, if there's a food truck parked and the generator going, and there's a SUV parked on this side, I come out of my driveway, and you're talking about sight distance problems, we got them. And they're parked all the way from Ms., Ms. Sally Hayes up on the corner of Memorial Drive, in front of Lewis Wolfe's, Ms. Carr's, ours, Ms. Southworth across the street. I mean, it's, 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 on some nights, it's unbearable. And I would ask that you take a lot of, this, this is going to have far-reaching ramifications. I can, I can assure you that, far-reaching ramifications. There may be others here tonight that have been here tonight to speak on it for its civic endeavors or whatever. I think they may do, they may do some good. They were, they were taught, they, they came in with the press, with the, with the premise, and not only the premise, but the promise, that they were going to be a pub, and they were going to sell beer, said this is not going to be a beer joint, said you're not going to have people coming in, staying in and out. Let me tell you what, I, I could have thought maybe I was living in Dodge City the other night. All, one thing was missing was the gunfire, because you could hear them hoopin' and hollerin' in that courtyard that they're planning on building this pavilion in. You could hear them hoopin' and hollerin' through the wall. Now, I go to bed about eight, excuse me, 9:30, 10 o'clock. And they, many nights, they're, they play well beyond the noise ordinance limitations. And-
Which is what?
Nine o'clock right now.
Is it nine? I'm not sure.
Yes. Many, many nights. Matter of fact, the other night, when I went to bed at 10:30, that's when I heard the hoopin' and hollerin', and it was right after, I guess they were, it was a second call, I don't know if they were calling for the musician to come back and, you know, like they do at a concert or whatever, but it, it, it ended at 10:30. But I would ask that you not approve this, and for good reason. And if you, and if you don't have enough information, because I think the information that you're getting, you're getting from patrons or people that are closely aligned with friendships and stuff from the, of the, of the pub. And I, I'd also like to ask the owner, while I'm standing here at the podium, I'll ask it, ask this question. Do you, do you remember telling me that you were not going to, y'all had no, no, you weren't going to serve food, you were going to sell beer to, it wouldn't be, I don't know what you call it, rowdies or whatever. That, that place is, is, you know, at one time, it, I guess it's a sentimental idea or whatever to think about a pub, a nice Irish pub. And that's what, with what you've got right now, that you've got a nice little Irish pub. You're, what you're going to create is a beer joint in downtown Georgetown. That's what you're going to create by building this pavilion and having outdoor music, because I know good and well, at nine o'clock, they ain't going to stop, or they ain't going to want to.
Mr. Hoffman, we'll hold the question till the end, but if there's a noise ordinance, if you don't mind me interrupting, isn't it not the rule, Charlie, he can call the law, and the law can come over and tell him to quiet it down? If the ordinance currently is at nine, and it's 10:30, and there's a band still playing?
Yeah. That's true, Mark.
Okay. And have you done that?
Mr. Silski, I should say.
Have you done that? No, Mark's fine. You're, you're good, Mr. Hoffman.
No, and you've come, you've come and, on, 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 on the Slante's behalf before-
Yeah, you and I talked.
I mean, we, we talked, that you wanted, wanted some consideration given to the, to the pub.
I mean, I think if there's an ordinance-
Where were we before?
Well, no, I quit, the question, I guess, was if, if there's an ordinance-
Oh, yeah.
And, and let's say-
Mad, have I called one time? Has anybody called?
Well, give, we, we'll hold that, but a question I think I had to ask of you is if you're living there, and it's 10:30 at night, I'd be the first one to call cops on him if you were, if the ordinance is nine o'clock and it's 10:30.
Now, you heard that coming from a friend.
And that's from a friend, but I would call-
That's coming from a friend.
Well, again, if the nor, noise ordinance and the rules and the laws are nine o'clock, and the band's playing at 10:30, Charlie, you know the rules, you can call the cops.
Yeah.
So, and that's what, I mean, I would do, and I would hope Matt and Ashley would respect if the rules currently are nine o'clock with a noise ordinance, that's the rules. I don't-
My phone number, not so, I told them you could call me.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I would say, Mr. Hoffman, and, and I heard those rules may be changing, which, you know, would-
No, but they're not.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, they're not changing.
They didn't change? Okay. I didn't-
They didn't change.
Okay, so there's your-
Hallelujah. Thank God, they not changed.
I hear what you're saying. So, all right. That was just my, my comment.
But Charlie here can tell you more about the noise ordinance than I can, and, and how Ms., you know, anyhow, you've got, you're trying to, you're trying to create the illusion that you can have historic properties, residential properties, alongside a, what's going to be a beer joint. And if they, if those two, if they, if you can make that a reality, I want to see it happen. And I would like to ask that the, the council or the commission consider what Ms. Carr said about a sound barrier buffer, a, a sound wall, and just like she, just like she alluded to. 12 to 14 feet is what it takes to, to sound, to actually be a sound barrier. Now, this fence that they put up the other day, like I said, all it does is help amplify it. And I have no malice against, there's no malice against Matt and Ashley, Nun, the owners or the proprietors of the, of the property. But there's a huge impact on that historic district there, and the people that, I'm, I'm here, I'm here representing people from East Main Street that couldn't be here because of being on vacation. I'm here representing people that, from the McKnight Apartments next door. I'm here representing people from Mulberry Street. They live on Mulberry Street, they're right there in ground zero, too. But, hey, I, I'm, I, I, my, my, when I lay down every night, it's, it's tough to, to deal with. And I ask that you all give this further consideration. If you're toying with the idea of passage of, of this with the information that you have, you'd come over and take a look at, at what, this is, they're, they're, they have big-scale plans for a postage-size stamp, postage-size lot. That's, and that's what it is. They're taking away whatever parking they have, they only have four parking places, but they're going to give that up to get the pavilion put in. So now, that puts more parking out on the streets, where it's already unbearable.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
All right. Yes, sir.
I have one question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith.
If you don't mind, Charlie. Is, is the noise an issue any day of the week, or is it certain days?
Not, not, no. It, it, it's just certain times. It's just certain times. It's not, it's not every day of the week. No. I think, I think they have an open mic out there probably half the nights, half the nights out of the, out of the week, especially on the weekends, of course. One night a week? One night a week, open mic? Is that right, Matt?
I can make a clarification.
If you want to come up, Mr.-
Open mic is a technical term, it's where we allow any musicians to come. That's on Thursday nights, seven to nine, so that isn't one night a week. We do generally have live music on Friday and Saturday nights, and for whatever nights we have it outside, otherwise we have it upstairs.
So three or four, like I said. But anybody else have any questions from, from the commission?
Commission?
For me? But I'm adamantly against it, and I speak on behalf of the, of the community, adjacent community members.
So for you, the issue is not, the issue for you is not as much parking as it is the noise? It's not?
Well, like I said, the parking, when I come out of my driveway, there's a food truck sitting here, and a SUV sitting here, and I've got to make my decision. I, I can't see the way. I can, usually I end up turning, turning right, just because it's ultimately, it's a little bit safer. But if I waited out till, to make a left turn out of my driveway, it's almost an impossibility. But to do it safely, Ms. Carr will attest to that. She has trouble getting out of her driveway also.
Could that food truck be parked in the pavilion area?
That food truck probably could be parked around the back part of the area. I don't know. But I know this, when you, when you bring up food truck, you also bring up the generators, huge generators they use to produce the energy to operate that they set outside. How'd you like to have that there and step outside, all night long, till the food truck leaves, which usually nine, 10 o'clock? So I, I, I'd ask that you, that you consider voting against this? If you're considering on passing it, I wish that you would, you would put it off or put it on the, on the schedule for continuance, because there's a lot of unknowns, uncertainty, and there's going to be a lot of people affected negatively by this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Anybody else like to speak? You're next, Mr. Langford, I promise.
My name is Heather Johnson, and my address is 529 East Main Street. And I am here to speak in favor of the expansion. I've lived in Georgetown since 2001, and I actually moved into the county first, and so I had a nice, quiet neighborhood. My husband and I bought a house on East Main in 2013, and it took a little getting used to, the noise, the parking, all of it. My house is catty-cornered to the church, and I also have trouble with parking, but I gladly have trouble with parking. I love that the church is meeting. I love that Main Street is a vibrant place. I love that people take walks and park and come visit their neighbors, and I love that we have small businesses downtown. I can't think of anything that I would like to see more than the expansion of businesses and even different types of businesses brought downtown. Since we've lived here, my husband has worked at Toyota for 25 years, and very often, we would avoid downtown. There was nothing that we were really interested in. And with Galvins coming in, and with Slantia, and all of the different businesses that are there, and the new, the quilt shop, just different things that are there, we're able to go downtown and spend our money. That's what I would like to see. So I am in favor of the expansion. I realize it does cause some growing pains, but I would ask you to consider the long-term ramifications of saying no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Langford, come on up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Bruce Langford. I have an office at 300 East Main, so I'm not really impacted as much as some of the other neighbors. But I question whether it's appropriate to consider this plan tonight. I heard one of the staff members early on tonight say that the 20-foot variance was approved at a Board of Adjustment meeting, the meeting I attended, it was not approved. So when was it approved? If it has not been approved, this plan would be inappropriate to bring in tonight.
It was approved.
When was it approved?
I believe February.
I couldn't tell you what, Mike.
I can, I can play a box.
Sure, come on up.
At the meeting, let me finish.
Okay, let me finish.
At the meeting I attended, I got notice. They took a vote, there were five members present. The vote was three to two. It takes a majority of the entire membership to carry the vote. Three to two wouldn't do it. So when was it approved? If you're going to tell me it was approved at the next meeting, I didn't receive notice of that meeting, and I didn't know it was going to be voted on. Nothing in the mail, no statements were na, were made at that meeting that night that I attended, that this will be voted again at the next meeting. So I questioned whether it's appropriate at all, until you clarify those issues, whether you should be considering this, this plan at all. This 20-foot setback, 25 feet down to five feet, that's a tremendous setback. And I don't know whether it's appropriate or not. That can be determined, but it, maybe it can't be determined tonight. Just thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. Do you want to answer that, Charlie, before Mr. Nun comes?
Well, I don't know that I can answer that, but Bruce is correct about the facts. I don't believe he's correct about the law. There is a, an ancient provision in our ordinance that calls for that. I think that's not a legal provision, and no one filed an appeal on it to, to question whether or not that vote, it made a, a majority vote. Unfortunately, there's no case in Kentucky that confirms that, where there have been cases with similar provisions, they've all failed, because that's an inappropriate presumption of additional authority and additional requirements by the local when it is preempted, if you will, at the state level. So no, I don't think that restriction is valid.
Okay.
And the vote was taken that night, it was approved, and it was not appealed, so I think it stands.
I, I can provide further color on that.
Sure, please, go ahead, Mr.-
I, I remember it vividly, because it, it matters to me.
Right.
You're correct, we did win that night, three to two. Mr. Langford did point out that we should have won four to, four to one because of the number of members present. So it was continued, there was continuation that night. It was explained that that night that it would be taken up at the next month to everyone in attendance, it was explained that it would be taken up the next month, and that no further statements would be sent out via mail. That was explained that night at the meeting. And so that, so that was that night, and then because of all the agita and tension between us and our neighbors, the major point of contention was the smoker. We were going to have a smoker to add food, so that we can eliminate the noisy food trucks. We wanted to eliminate those. Neighbors didn't like that plan, so we decided to abandon the plan of the smoker and building a kitchen in the back, and instead came up with this plan to build a pavilion. I went and spoke with Mr. Langford in his office and explained that to him, and, and I believe the comment you gave me, Mr. Langford, was that you would not be opposed to this, this model. And, and so then that next meeting, we won the vote five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Nun.
And I forgot about that, that's true. We did, in fact, do that.
Mr. Chairman, in response, I stayed until the meeting was over, and that was the last item on the meeting, and it was not announced to me, and I didn't hear it, that it would be continued and voted on on the next meeting.
I would think that would be something you'd have to take up with Board of Adjustments, not us.
Yeah, but I have to take it up with you, because you're considering this plan.
Right.
And if it's voted down, or it's not voted, there may be a regulation that requires you to wait one year before you come back for a vote again. before you come back for a vote again.
I would defer that question to my attorney to my right.
Whoever thought I'd be in a position of arguing against Bruce Langford?
I hear ya.
But no, I, I do believe it was. I'd forgotten it, but the chair continued the matter to the following month till we looked into it. And the following month, the plan was changed somewhat, and it was voted unanimously. So that made moot the earlier issue concerning the not being a majority vote of the entire membership.
And I wasn't there. I'm not part of that board, so I can't answer that, Mr. Langford.
Well, why didn't they give notice if they're gonna vote again?
Because it was continued from that meeting. It was not resc, a newly scheduled. It was continued that evening.
I left when the meeting was over. This was the last item.
Now, now, that I can't help.
It was not announced by the chairman in my presence that it would be voted on the next meeting.
Charlie, are you, you're their attorney as well? And you remember that?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm quite sure of that. And I'll provide Bruce with half the minutes in the morning.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wanna speak on behalf or against?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm not--
Again, state your name for the record.
Martha Smith.
Thank you.
Um, a lot of comments have been made about the neighbors this, the neighbors that. Only, only within about a week or two have I had any notice of any of these changes. I'm the owner on record across the street. I know that there are regulations that say how far to go. But being included in the neighbors, as the neighbors are opposed, the neighbors, some of the neighbors who were directly affected have not even been informed. And, and there can be extenuating circumstances, but I, I don't think that the antagonistic point of view that's being portrayed or anti-business, anti-growth, stuck-in-the-mud kind of conversations, none of that is appropriate to this issue. Nobody is saying anything against drinking. Nobody is saying anything about a business. But this is about a variance that affects the enjoyment and welfare of existing residences. And it's, it's on record as an R and it's, it's got bo, it's got dual designation there.
It's not a variance, though. Um, and maybe you're using that word improperly.
Yeah, I'm using it wrongly. So tell me what we're doing now, because obviously you're voting to go on, set a precedent, change the building, other--
Well, a variance is, is something that's against, um, the current laws, and they're not requesting a variance.
The setback is already the issue, right? I mean, it's already, the variance has already been--
The variance has already been decided by Board of Adjustment.
Right.
This board doesn't, doesn't do that. That was done by the Board of Adjustment.
Correct, so there's no variances on this particular application.
And that's the one that Mr. Langford is questioning about whether or not--
In fact, this board, all this board really does is to approve the development plan. Uh, and if it meets all the regs, they really don't even have a whole lot of discretion about that. And I dare say, without being real specific, I dare say it probably satisfies the regs, in light of the variance, that is.
So basically, what I'm hearing, and I just think to clarify it, is that all these people are speaking in favor as if somebody's opposed to their business. And I'm saying, there are things that have happened that we weren't even informed of, that people who have vested interest in the area are being portrayed as being negative in a way that is not accurate. It's being not considered. And I repeat it again and again and again. To not be considered when you were already there before this came in, before these owners owned the building, before any of these things took place, is a problem. And it should not continue to happen in a community that wants to grow and appreciate its historic character. This is not how it should happen.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak against or in favor? Mr. Overmeyer?
Jason Overmeyer, 428 Military Street, Georgetown. Um, I'll keep my comments brief, you know. I'm in favor. You know, I won't repeat everything about the pub that people like about it or don't like about it. But it seems to me, you know, the previous speaker said that this wasn't about being anti-business, business, but, and there's been a lot of talk about precedent, not precedent, but I think the precedent, to the extent that there is any here, was made, it was alluded to, was made when that building was known B3. I mean, this is the central business district. This is what central business districts do. This is the kind of growth that Georgetown needs to encourage. You know, battles fought when, you know, the plan was put in place that this is part of the central business district, and this is the kind of development that Georgetown needs and is going for. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overmeyer. Anyone else like to speak, again in favor or against? Thank you. Um, Matt, do you wanna come up and answer?
No, I, I like to say something. I'm sorry. Mark?
No problem, Mr. Hoffman.
Um, some of the things that are, to, that have been alluded to, I was at the meeting, Charlie, the night that that vote was taken, and it failed because there were two recu, two recusals. So there was not a majority of the membership that passed that, that ordinance. Matter of fact, that, that made it--
Well, it didn't fail.
That made it failed. It made, yes, sir, that made it fail.
Well, that's his legal opinion, and I gave you mine.
Yeah, yeah, with my juris doctrine and all, yeah. Yeah, thank you. But, um, this, this, uh, this plan is not, I mean, it is, this is a half-baked, un-understood, un, unsuspecting, um, segue into what's gonna be a nightmare. And I can tell you that the, the people on East Main Street, people on, 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 you know, all over, all over the central downtown area, those people that live in apartments next door, they're all gonna be negatively affected by this pavilion. Now, they've got a nice courtyard out there right now. They wanna put up a awning or a tent for temporary times, you know, where they can go out there, but a permanent structure that, that actually obstructs, uh, the sun, the sunlight from, from my house. Uh, the sun, the sun sets, and it's, it's gonna be a tall building. Just like I said, the, the owners assured us that they, they had a, a plan in, in mind. They have fulfilled the plan that they had in mind. They have fulfilled it. But now they're asking for you to open the, the box up and let the genie out. And once the genie's out, you're gonna see deterioration in property values. You're gonna see deterioration in the community, downtown people. I'm, I'm, you know, sure, they, they depend on people coming from miles around out in, out in the counties and county and rural areas or whatever. But they, they're thriving right now. If they're, if they're not thriving, what are all the, what are all the parkings doing up and down that street? And, uh, so again, I ask that you, uh, not pass this tonight, and, uh, I'll sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Nunn, you wanna, oh, sure, go ahead.
My name is James Dugood, um, and I live at 321 East Main Street, directly across from the pub. Um, and my biggest concern would be the two we've heard from Ms. Carr, which would be noise and parking. Um, the generator, to me, is the biggest nuisance lately, more so than music, for sure. Um, and then parking, I am not afforded with off-street parking at my residence. Um, so the increase over the last few years has definitely impacted my ability to park in front of my own house. You know, you go to the grocery, come home, and you gotta walk a block to bring your groceries into your own house. Um, so that's how it's directly affected me. And so I share their sentiment, um, and would, my, I would ask that you don't approve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Miss, anybody else wanna speak? Go ahead.
I'm Kelly McEwan. I live at 409 East Main Street. It's been about four years since I've been at a public meeting.
It's been a while.
It feels unusual. But I'm glad to be here tonight. As far as notices, I've been at 409 East Main Street for six years, and I think the only notice I've got about either tonight's issue or the smoker was actually from Matt directly, uh, by mail. So I'm not sure where that responsibility lies, um, with P&amp;Z, um, or with the city. But I'd ask that you maybe take a look at that as well. You know, I first started coming to Georgetown in 1979 as a kid, when my sister was a, a student here at Georgetown College. And the only place we can stay was Winter Circle. The only place we could eat was Jerry's. Um, and anything past where Wendy's is now is really out in the middle of nowhere. Um, my wife grew up on Chambers. She was born and raised there. Actually, was born when her parents lived at Warren Dale. Um, so we're, we're really connected to Georgetown. I came here in 88 as a student, just after Toyota started. Another cars came to Main Street right after Toyota announcing construction had started. And, uh, I'm glad to know Ben and Martha and, and her mom over the years. Actually, my first summer, uh, in Georgetown as a student, I rented the basement of 405 East Main Street and walked downtown and so forth. But at that time, uh, in the late 80s, where the Georgetown College Art Building is now, there was a laundromat. And as a student, you never did go past the laundromat up Mulberry because you didn't know where it went. And there was nothing downtown to go to anyway for a student. So for me, as an alun, alumnus of Georgetown, to be able to, to be downtown and, and walk my dog around the campus, it's really amazing. And anybody that has known me in the last six years as a Main Street resident has heard me say that on the weekends that I don't leave my house or at least go as far as the bypass, it's almost like it's 1979 still. We can walk to save a lot. We can walk and get Thai food. We can walk to Rodney's and get a great dinner. We can go to local feed and do the same. We can go to Galvins. And it's amazing to be able to walk the, to wherever, wherever we want to go and, and, and enjoy it. When we moved to Main Street, we knew that we were moving to Main Street, and we knew that we didn't own that state road or the parking on it. And if people wanna park all the way from 409 East Main Street or Slantia Pub or from the former post office all the way down to Shell and out East Main extended, they're welcome to do that, you know. I absolutely understand, um, Mr. Dugood doesn't have parking along with one other of his neighbors. Where we live is about four houses down. Um, we're across Main Street. Occasionally, I do hear the music, uh, at my house. I don't usually hear it if I'm in the backyard. I don't wanna dispute Mr. Hoffman entirely, but I can't imagine that the music from Slantia Pub would be heard on Bourbon Street. That seems almost ludicrous. There have been times in the past when I'm in my backyard that I have heard music coming from Ed Davis, but I wouldn't have heard it on the front side of my house. But again, it was faint. So that's kinda surprising. But, you know, he, he and Ann bought, uh, on Main Street five years ago. They lived there about a year. Took them, you know, they spent a lot of time renovating that. I think it was 91 or so when your family renovated your mom's house almost entirely. And I was glad to be able to see that and see that people are interested in, in preserving what we have. And I meet people from, and most recently last week, from, from Michigan, who had come down to the Bourbon Trail and just loved to see our downtown there. Like, it's like a snapshot from somewhere else, from another time. And it's still that way. And I think Slantia, Matt, and Ashley are trying to participate in the community in that way, and we're glad to be part of it. I think the most significant thing for me tonight is to share with you, about a year and a half ago, the yellow striping on Main Street was very faded. I think the Wolf's and the Cars, um, maybe even Hoffman Property, didn't even have yellow on either side of their driveway on the curbs. We had it at our house. Martha and, and Ron and Jane next to us at 405 had it on theirs, but it was faded. So there was an enforcement issue, you know. Even if I'd called the police and said, hey, there are cars hanging over, their back ends are hanging over Mr. Carr, Ms. Carr's property, which happened. I talked to them about it. They're hanging over our driveways. But, you know, if they're, if it's not striped, if it's not marked, police can't do anything enforcement-wise. So I talked to Matt and Ashley, and, uh, they immediately put up signage at the pub, please don't park in front of our neighbors' driveways. Please don't block their driveways. And do not park in front of the yellow striped areas. Proactively through conversation that I had with them. I was very pleased with that. The dialogue existed. It was simply a request. Next thing I did was talk to the mayor, and Public Works striped it. Just this week, they've restriped it again. They added, uh, yellow to driveway entrances that didn't exist, even over the last year and a half. Now they have it. And it went all the way down. They striped, striped it all the way, I guess, down to Shell, maybe even to 529. So there's a possibility for enforcement. If somebody's blocking your driveway or they're parked in, over the yellow, it's easy. Call the cops. Let the police department take care of it. That happens. But without that enforcement, uh, you know, the yellow striping in place, it's not possible. But again, the dialogue I had with Matt and Ashley was positive, and they were proactive to, to let their patrons know. The city took care of that part for us. I'm sorry that this is the second hurdle for them in some respects, only because I grew up in western Kentucky. And the first hurdle for them, which is they've given up on, was the smoker issue, which was kinda funny because even when I talked with a few neighbors about the smoker concerns early on was the fact that they're talking about a commercial smoker, much like Red State or J.J. McBrewster, which is now Lyles BBQ on Clay's Mill Road. You can go into those barbecue places, especially Lyles BBQ on Clay's Mill Road in Lexington. There are commercial smokers inside the building. There's no hickory woodpile outside. There's no rolling smoke. I know, 'cause I taught at Jesse Clark Middle School for seven years up the road. But I'm a little more of a purist on the barbecue end, growing up in western Kentucky, where it really, there's no gas with the hickory-flavored smoke or whatever. It's, it's, it's really smoker. So anyway, that's, you know, not everybody understood how barbecue is done that way and how a commercial smoker works, but we're past that now. But again, parking is an issue if you don't have parking on your own property. We have a driveway. We have a backyard. There's, excuse me, there are times that I, I prefer to back into my driveway. There are times I can't back in, and I get, I pull in, but that's not a problem 'cause I can turn around in my backyard. If you don't have parking, like Mr. Dugood, then that is an issue. And they're directly across the street. And the generators, um, that the food trucks have are, are necessary for them to power their, uh, that. The, uh, the barbecue smoker may have taken the place of the food trucks, but again, we're past that hurdle they've given up on it. Regarding the pavilion, um, I, I, I don't know what the concept plan height of your pavilion is, but I can't imagine it's any taller than your building or the McKnight Apartments. So I don't think it's gonna block anyone else's, um, sunlight, but certainly give you a better opportunity. Uh, I've been at the pub, sitting on the patio before, when a brief rain shower came up. And, you know, if the inside's full, you know, you either go home, or if you're lucky like me, you can just walk home four houses away. But, you know, if they don't have that, then they lose patrons. Of course, the variance, the going from 25-foot down to 5-foot has already been decided by, uh, the Board of Adjustments, which makes a big difference. They couldn't have had, uh, a 25-foot setback in either direction on a property that's about 50 feet wide. That wouldn't have existed at all. That wouldn't even have been a possibility. So again, I think there are lots of concerns here. I understand both sides. Sometimes when I was on city council, I'd try to presi, present both sides of an issue, and then I'd vote surprisingly the other direction because I, I think it's important that we have dialogue. Matt and Ashley have allowed me, as a resident, that dialogue when there's an issue, such as the parking, that they've, they've addressed it and, as they could. The city addressed it as they, as they could as well. But I would be in favor of this. I don't see why, um, we would, uh, want to stop this possib, possibility for, for them. The other thing I found a little bit humorous tonight, I wouldn't be opposed to a 12- to 14-foot sound barrier or additional, uh, requirements or reparation. That makes sense. But you can't really speak about that and historic preservation in the same breath, and that happens. So I don't think a 12- to 14-foot sound barrier, uh, would follow any historic preservation. But we've sort of long since given up, to some degree, historic preservation because we don't have that overlay now, but that's another issue for another time. So I'm in favor of it, um, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McEwan. Matt, would you like to--
Matt, would you like to come up and address some of the questions?
I apologize if my notes are all over the place, but they won't be here. I will read them directly so that I can be somewhat brief. First thing I do want to point out, Charlie, you have been very neighborly. You have been. You haven't called the police when there's probably times that you could have, and I do respect and greatly appreciate that. Again, these are somewhat out of, out of order. There was a comment about the apartments next door, the Mulberry McKnight Apartments. We spoke to Barbara Moore actually two nights ago. Just, we've, we talk to her often. We check with her often. We're, we're friends. And we say, hey, how's things going? And she's told us many times that she's never had a single complaint. And we spoke to her last night, like, two nights ago, I think, and she affirmed that that is still the case. They've never had a, a single complaint from any of their residents there. We, we do try to do things to limit the impact. We, like, as Kelly said, we, as soon as we learned about the parking issue, we took action to do that. And a couple of things we didn't mention, we, we specifically spoke to our bartenders and our regular customers and asked them not, we direct our bartenders because we can, to not park across the street where the, the residents do not have off-street parking. We said, that's, that's a no-go. Please park somewhere else. And we've asked our regular customers to avoid parking in front of those houses, because again, those residents do not have off-street parking. Another thing we just learned about last night is there's this thing called a generator box. Literally learned about it last night, and apparently you can put it over a generator and reduce the noise. So we have a plan to purchase one of those now, so that we can, you know, further limit the impact to our, to our neighbors. I, I want to point out that we've complied with all notification requirements. I, I think the planning and zoning staff can attest to that. We've given proof for every application we submitted that we have complied with all notification requirements. Speaking of requirements, the, the, the city has an ordinance that fences can't be any higher than six feet. That's why we use a six-foot fence. They could have been higher. We likely would have gone with eight or nine feet, because we understand the issue. But we were working within that city ordinance of six feet. A lot, a lot, there was a lot of talk about parking. As these residents have pointed out, the parking is pretty much full on Main Street. So any additional parking, I think, will come on other streets and other city lots that are located nearby. The distance between our property and the Hoffman residence, I don't think Charlie was intentionally being misleading, but I think it was a little bit off. Where you're sitting now is where, we'll say, our band would play. This right here would probably be close to the fountain. That's our, not even, actually, the fountain would probably be a little bit outside the hallway. And then there's Charlie's driveway, Charlie's side yard, and then it's home. Charlie talked a little bit about our business model changing. We're still a pub. The definition of a pub, actually, pub is short for public house. Public houses were created in Ireland and England many, many years ago, because before that, the only way people could drink in public is they had to be people of means, people with money, and they had to pay for entry into a club. Public houses were created for people, working class people, to have a place to go and gather. We still are a public house in every, every meaning of the word. We still sell beer. We've always still sold beer. So I don't think that, I guess you probably could say we're a beer joint. I don't know exactly what that definition is, but we've always sold beer. We do not believe adding this pavilion is going to change our business model or atmosphere. If we did, we would not do it, because as many people can attest, the atmosphere works, the business model works. So we're not looking to change the characteristics of our business in any shape or form. Again, I'm sorry, I'm kind of all over the place. We've tried to eliminate food trucks, but as Kelly pointed out, we were thwarted in those efforts. When there are food trucks, we have them plug into our building electric when they can. But some of the trucks have equipment that just doesn't allow that. It throws the breakers. The truck last night, for example, was one. I don't know the exact ratio, how many trucks, fifty-fifty or what it is, that can plug in, but all those that can do. And they'd rather do that than run on gas. So that's, again, fairly common. The, the pavilion height, like I said, will be about like a city park. It will not be any higher, as Kelly pointed out, than the existing buildings. So it's not going to change the characteristics or the, the light around there. And if anything, it's going to provide more of a sound barrier, more of a sound barrier. Right now, there's nothing in that parking lot, absolutely nothing. We're talking about putting a structure between our customers and our neighbors. In addition to the structure, we will have to put landscape barriers. So again, we're adding sound barriers to the property, not reducing. The, our plan meets all state and local regulations. I think that's important to point out. And I guess the last thing I would say, no, the second last thing I would say is, you know, rejecting this will not change the problems that have been presented today. They exist. We do all that we can to limit the impact, because we want to be good neighbors, much like our neighbors, I truly believe they've been good to us. We want to be the same way. But at the same time, we have bills to pay. And it looks like we're thriving, but I still work two jobs, and then that's one card I work this way, because the business is not thriving to the point that I can walk away from those jobs. So we, we are looking to pay, pay bills at that, at that establishment. And the last thing I do want to say, we talked a lot about historic preservation and the character of neighborhood. Ann Bevan, who everyone knows and loves, is a treasure of this county. She's done a lot of historical research and written a few books, and we purchased those books. And our building is talked about quite frequently in those books. And one of the things it talks about is when the building was constructed by Mr. George Alguer, he designed the upper room in a specific way so that it could be a meeting place for the community. Ann's book talks about this. The Catholic Church held mass in that upper room for over a decade when the circuit priests came to town. That, that room, its original intent was a community meeting place. The city's well was in the backyard in our courtyard. The breezeway that's there, Mr. Alguer, from what we understand, put that in place so the town's residents can come back and forth and get their water. So that property, you could argue, has always been where it is today, a meeting place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nun. Any, well, did you have a question for Mr. Nun? Mr. Nun, would you come back here, Mr. Wiseman?
I'm not as sad as you think.
Mr. Wiseman asked a question. Commissioner Wiseman?
Yeah, a couple of questions. If this development plan is put into effect, how many additional patrons would you have present at a given time?
We, we think about forty. It's going to be tables and chairs. If you go to our courtyard now, we have four top tables, like outdoor furniture and chairs. Looking at what that footprint is now and translating it to that spot, we think about forty, maybe less, because we may, we don't want to crowd people in. We want people to walk and run freely. So.
What percent increase would that be? How many do you have now, for example?
In the court, overall, we have ninety-three seats, I think? No, no, no. We've got sixty seats inside, sixty seats outside. So it's a hundred twenty seats. And so it'd be about a thirty percent increase.
What about upstairs?
That's including everything, yeah. So I think we have about a hundred twenty seats total, sixty inside and sixty outside.
So about a thirty percent increase, roughly.
And regarding the noise, if, if, if the noise ordinance says the band stops at nine, why don't you make it stop at nine?
Quite, quite honestly, we, we did not know that we were in violation of the noise ordinance. We, from what we understood was that it has to be a complaint, and we've, we've never received a complaint. Talking to our neighbors, we're going to look at what we can do to limit the effect of noise.
From now on, at nine o'clock, the band stops, right?
Well, I don't, I don't know if we can say that. We're going to try our best, but we might have to quiet them down at nine o'clock.
Well, if you're the owner, why can't you just say that's it?
Well, what I'm saying is we might have to quiet them down, because like I said, we still have to conduct commerce.
Yeah, but the band would have to play, though.
It, it is a, it is a benefit to our business to have live music. And so what we will do is, again, we'll, we'll try to manage the noise level moving forward to the best we can.
Okay. My last question, I've heard four or five pronunciations of your business. Can you tell me the official one?
Yes, sir. It's Slantcha, public house. So when you're in Ireland, Slantcha is the Irish word for healthy. So when you're in Ireland, you toast, instead of saying cheers, you say Slantcha, so you're toasting to your health.
I had a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any reason that the power for the food truck, when, when it is there, could not be supplied from the business? I mean, why couldn't they bring a plug out?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I thought I addressed that. But yes, we, we do that with the food trucks that can. Many of the food trucks can plug into our building, but some of the food trucks, for instance, the food truck last night, their equipment is too powerful. It trips our breakers. So they plug in, breakers trip. Plug in, breakers trip. So they have to run a generator.
Upgrade your breakers. I mean, upgrade your electric service. I mean, that would, that would help a lot of the neighbors, I would think.
Yeah, okay. That's an idea. We did, we never even considered that possibility.
Make it bigger.
Like I say, one thing we are looking to do is purchase a generator box. It's called a quiet box. We learned about that last night. So we plan to purchase that, so that those, those food trucks that cannot plug in, will, will use that quiet box to replace with their generators, and that's opposed to, I think, reduces more than seventy-five, seventy percent, is what the advertisement claims.
I think it's, it's pretty obvious that this is a great place for a lot of people. And it's a living hell for some, for, for other people. And, you know, if you're next door to it and, and you don't appreciate it, then Charlie's probably about ready to move from his house. I, I don't know. There's got to be some compromise in there. You got, I know you're always trying to do your very best, but somebody in the city, I think, needs to come up with an ordinance that people that live right there in, in those downtown areas need a, a few reserved spots for the, for residents. We have that on, I think we have that on streets already around the college.
We, we introduced that idea, actually, to members of city government. And the comments that we received was those ordinance, where they get like permit parking for residents, in the past have created more problems than they caused. That's just the feedback. Because I introduced, at, at the request of our neighbors from a previous meeting, heard that complaint, so I went to the city and said, hey, I would support this. I'm in favor of this. Please do it. And that was the feedback that I received.
That's what I'm hearing, is we have a parking problem already. If you're going to add forty more, forty more people potentially, then we're really going to have a parking problem.
Commissioner Smith, though, it's, it's more of a comment, is the one lady, and I'm not sure where she's at. She may have already left. She's back there. The church has a wonderful attendance. Holy cow, if you're Mr. Burns, who I think has already left, who lives directly across from a church, that parking, especially tomorrow night, Fish Fry, is a nightmare. Way worse than the pub will ever be. And, and, you know, do you close down a church? No. Right. I mean, I, I drive by there. Thank God I don't live downtown. I live in a, in a subdivision, and we have a little better parking. But that's kind of the price you pay for living on Main Street.
Well, there's, there's some difference.
Well, and, and parking.
When you get up around the church, most people have off-street parking.
I've only been until eight years.
When you get down to Slantcha House, there's, a lot of people don't have off-street.
Mr. Smith, if I could clarify, there's only three houses across the street that do not have off-street parking. All the other houses. I'm just saying, it's not, I mean, proportionate. It, it's three additional spots. And then the other thing that I, I would like to point out is, as many of our neighbors have pointed, have said, parking already is pretty much full on Friday and Saturday nights. So any additional spots that we have, I think will go to other streets, and such as the public lot behind the, the old post office, the museum, the Georgetown Baptist Church parking lot. I think people will start spreading out parking in different areas of town. I don't see a situation where we would be double parking on Main Street, for example.
They would.
I think you talk to any business owner on Main Street. I've been here eight years. Parking is an issue, I mean, in downtown Georgetown, period. Not just for the pub. It's for every business. And, and again, Mr. Burns, I think, has already left. They have, I was in the same occasion.
I would just add, at four oh nine, like I said, about four houses down, and we are not all the way to the college entrance, but.
It's close.
Almost a hundred percent of the time, the traffic from Slantcha at its peak comes to in front of our house. But I, I would venture to say it never goes past it. So they can go all the way from the house.
And I'd say church parking is a lot worse than.
Well, I was just saying, it's Bourbon Street, yeah. That's what I said, and I mean it.
There you go. All right. Well, thank you all. The only other, the question, I don't think it's maybe a comment for Mr. Nun, or Michaela can speak to it. I think I heard a couple people talk about noise, well, sound barriers. I've read the application over and over. It doesn't talk about sound barriers being implemented, but landscape buffers. There's a lot difference. That landscape buffers, that fence, possibly shrubs. Nowhere in the application does it talk about sound barriers and twelve-foot or fourteen-foot sound barrier fences. And I think that'd be, even for Mr. Hoffman, I think that would be hideous to have a fourteen-foot fence next to your house. Just, just saying.
Again, we, we, we've just, we've just done what we've been instructed to do as far as to be in compliance. So we were told that we had to have a six-foot opaque fence and a landscape barrier mixed of trees and bushes. There's, it's in the planning and zoning manual, the things we'd have to do.
Michaela, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so we've just tried to.
I hear you. Well, a question I'd have from Ms. Michaela is, do they meet all the current statutes and requirements of the landscape buffer currently?
The, the landscape buffer area, it's written up as being a fifteen-foot landscape buffer area, but it can be reduced to five feet with a six-foot high privacy or opaque fence. So that's, that's what they're proposing on this plan. It requires planning commission approval to reduce that to five feet. And then one tree every forty feet from group area. So they will need to add, I believe, one to two additional trees in the final plan.
All right. Thank, does anybody else have any other questions for?
Yes, I do.
Michaela, stay up?
No.
Oh, for Mr. Nun?
Yes, sir. Does the, the outdoor seating, does the fire marshal get involved in that? Does that add to your capacity?
Yes, they, they've been out. They've visited the business. They've posed exactly what we have to do to comply. And they, even when we were talking about this project, Tim Thompson, the Fire Department and Conde Force, that came out and looked at how the pavilion would affect the entryway to firefighters, and he was, okay. And he was at the planning, planning zone. He has a, we call it a staff review meeting or a technical review meeting, and he was there at that meeting, and he had no confidence. He was okay with, with the plan.
But it doesn't affect the seating capacity? Just like an indoor facility can only have so many?
Oh, yeah. From what I understand, there, I, I, I think there is a, a limitation to that space, and we're well within, within that number.
Okay.
I think that, I don't think we're ever going to get away from the, the traffic. Like the chairman was talking about on the Saturday nights and Sundays, on the other end of Main Street with the, the traffic and parking at the Catholic Church. You know, a, a couple of things. I was, I was disappointed tonight that we didn't see what it was going to look like. I wish Mr. Burris had gotten you that information. You know, the, the height, I'm sure, is not going to be more than eight or ten feet there to be.
I've got, so, can I speak now?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize.
No, I was just saying.
We, so we were never asked to provide that for this meeting. For the last meeting, for the variance approval, we were asked to provide it, and it was kind of last minute. And so I, I provided a very crude drawing that can give, I mean, do you have any interest in seeing that?
No, no. He's, you know, at some point in time, he's going to have a architectural drawing of, of the building there. It'd just be nice to be able to see that.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I'm new to this, and we, we just provided what we were instructed to provide.
And, and again, Mr. Burris may be able to help you with, you know, some type of decorative sound barrier that attaches to that fence. Because, you know, a half-inch paneling fence isn't going to stop much noise there, but if you can absorb something.
We're, we're willing to entertain those ideas. I mean, again, we're working with what we believe within the limits of what we can do. We were told the city ordinance is a six-foot fence. If there's something we can do to thicken it, or, like I said, what we've already committed to do is on the pavilion, we're going to enclose both ends. So I, I, I hope, I hope the message comes across that we're, we're doing our level best to.
Oh, I have no doubt. I think you've been a more, last night, or it's Thursday, whatever night the city council met, and they voted not to extend the noise barrier, or the noise ordinance past nine o'clock. How did you, how do you feel like that affects your business?
Well, yeah, I'll speak, I'll speak in order there. They did not vote not to. What they did is they had a, I guess, Robert's Rule of Order to postpone it indefinitely for further conversation.
Right.
It could have a significant impact on our business. Again, our neighbors have been very neighborly. I hope that continues. We, we want to be, continue to be good neighbors. But if, if that stops and we have, you know, they start calling the police and we have to stop having live music past eight, up to nine o'clock, that would have a significant impact on our business.
Any other questions for Mr. Nun?
No.
Thank you, sir.
I would have a comment. I mean, as much as possible, I would say any patron that comes, comes to your place of business, I would encourage them to park either, especially after hours, if they park behind the old post office, they park in the. I'm trying to think what the options are to park besides Main Street, because.
Yes, sir. We've, we've done that. Like I said, we've talked to our regular customers. But the thing is, and I, I think this is an attribute for our business in the city, we get a lot of people from outside of Georgetown coming to our, our, our business on Fridays or nights. So that's not, that's outside dollars coming into the community. It's not uncommon for us on Fridays and Saturday nights to have people from Lexington, Versailles, Midway, Paris, all over coming to have dinner at local feed and have, have, you know, a few drinks at the pub. It's.
I want to say one thing.
Yes, ma'am?
Come on up, Mrs. Nun, and tell us who we are and give us your address.
Ashley Nun, One Twelve Inverness Drive. And we have plans to make, put up a map of downtown Georgetown and to highlight other parking areas. We just put up an actual bulletin board at our place to display information for patrons like that. And we've got information on there already about our place, questions, answers, and things like that. So that's in the works. And we understand that that might help significantly, because some people don't even know about other parking, like the other areas that he spoke about. So we are. So we are trying to do that, we just haven't done it yet, but that will be there. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Nun. Any other questions for either Mr. or Mrs. Nun? All right. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or we, I think, need to take a vote? Charlie? This is last time, Mr. Hoffman, I'm just teasing you. You know, I'm just teasing you.
Final word. I did hear the music at four oh six Bourbon Street and it was coming from the pub. I'll reiterate that, want to reinforce that, Kelly, I was there, I was there. I asked that you all might take action upon this tonight. I don't think you know the long-term ramifications of what is. And I'm gonna be one, I'm gonna be critical of the staff. I think that they have not been transparent in their working with adjoining property owners, Michaela. I don't believe that you, I don't believe that you all have been forthright with the, with the, with the community. And you know that your job is to protect protected areas. This is, this is a protected historic district, residential district that we live in. What you're wanting to do is drop a dagger in it. And that's what, that's what this action will do, it will drop a dagger in what we know now is a historic part of Georgetown where people have invested their entire life savings into a home or keeping up that integrity in that. And I believe, and Mr.?
And call me Mark, that's fine.
Mark, because of your friendship, close friendship with Matt and Ashley. I would ask that you would recuse yourself from any vote taken. Because I think that you have preconceived, have a preconceived opinion. You can take exception to that if you'd like to.
And I'll speak to transparency, I approached Mr. Hoffman probably a year ago, about a year. And him and I sat in his living room and I looked to beautify the community that I live in. And requested Mrs. Nun and Mr. Nun said they wanted to have a painting on that wall that faces Mr. Hoffman's home. So for the record, and I have no problem to speak to this, I had approached Mr. Hoffman. I said, I think it'd be a great idea to have a nice landscape of some horses by local artists. Welcome to Georgetown on the wall of the pub. And that was my relationship with Mr. and Mrs. Nun. Yes, there's a friendship there, I know him, but I know you too and I'd almost consider you a friend, I think. So that's my transparency, I have no financial gain because, you know, I have no ownership in the pub. So I know, I can actually ask Charlie if you think I need to recuse myself and it looks like the answer is no. But thank you for asking.
But I still, I still wanna go on record as saying that staff was derelict in their duties and I think that everyone.
In all fairness, Mr. Hoffman, it is a B three and the B three zoning, it does allow this.
Charlie can tell you the history behind that.
And I know.
That's.
You and Charlie have a lot more history about that building than I do.
Oh, yeah, I sat in those seats up there for nine years and I.
I know, sir.
Yeah, I know, I know exactly what you all be confronted, I know the ramifications of your decisions and far reaching ramifications of what Georgetown is and what it can become, bad or good.
But we do have to defend our staff, I mean, our staff, I think, does a great job and I think we all do truly.
I expect you to.
Be transparent, I hope.
But I also expect to take up for myself and the interest of the people that I'm up here representing.
I appreciate you, thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mark, for defending staff, I mean, just to defend Michaela again, she's not taking sides in this issue. I mean, she's presented the information we got, she's provided the staff report that reflects the information we have. If there's any information out there that she didn't provide or the applicant didn't provide, it should be provided now or provided in the future.
And as a commission, I think we hear, we're here to listen to y'all, whether it's pros, cons. And then we, of course, hear the opinion of the people. And then we hope to make the best judgment and decision on the fastest growing county in the state of Kentucky. And unfortunately, and I can't remember who said it, in five years, we're gonna be sixty seven thousand. If you, and I think the study said in the year twenty forty, we're gonna be over a hundred thousand. There's no stopping this freight train, it's moving. And, you know, and it's, traffic's, when I was coming here at five thirtyish, coming down Main Street, and I live in Bradford. The traffic was backed up all the way to CVS and I can watch and look down the hill to get to Main Street. And I said, holy cow, traffic's not gonna get any better around here, folks. And if you don't like it, move to Paris and you can go down there, Main Street, and look at about half the buildings that are empty. So do we want that? We can, if you wanna stop everything, all the growth in town, but I don't think we can.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, this commission can slow things down.
Well, we can, if we wanna die like some of the surrounding communities, if that's what y'all want.
We can keep growing at a good rate and still not go ninety miles an hour down the interstate like we're doing now.
But Mr. Wiseman, would you not agree, I think we do a fairly decent job up here managing our growth. And that's what we do, we try to manage it.
I don't remember any developer we've turned down in the time I've been on here.
Why? I think there's been a couple, but.
Very few.
Yeah, probably, I agree.
We need to do a better job, I was driving into and the traffic was bad and I said, the reason is, the board I'm sitting on is the reason this traffic is so bad.
It's bad, that's for sure. I agree, thank you, thank you all. Any other comments, thoughts, concerns? If not, I need to entertain a motion.
I wouldn't make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Charlie Hoffman is not the only one who's complaining about the, about the noise. Any, there are three residents to the, to the east, at least three, maybe four, and I guess Louis Wolf, he's not happy, is he? So the people that are, the people that are closest are the most affected. And it's, I don't think they're, I don't think these people are lying to us that they, that they're hearing noise. I think the Slantia House needs to be more considerate. Well, you're probably trying to be considerate, it's your patrons that probably aren't being considerate. And when they park, when they, when they make too much noise, when the music continues until nine thirty and it's too loud. You just need to be considerate of neighbors. And I think we need to go back even, I think Charlie would be in favor probably. What I can envision is maybe a nice brick, old brick wall or something across there, about ten feet tall, covered in English ivy. That would be a sound barrier. I don't know what it'll do for the people next door at McKnight's, but I think would help Charlie and probably might help a few people up, up the street.
But Mr. Nun is correct in that the city ordinance.
Well, we can change that, we can change that city ordinance if we need to, we can.
Six foot, because I had a neighbor that put up an eight foot fence there and.
City council can change it if they want.
That's right.
And that may be the reason we need to continue this meeting because I don't think we can make a decision that's gonna please everybody.
I wouldn't have a problem with that either.
I probably shouldn't throw this out there, but it's just my opinion that, that ordinance is a fence ordinance. A sound barrier is a different animal.
We don't have a sound barrier ordinance that I know of and this is a special situation. You're, you're sitting next to people that have lived there for thirty years, some for, some grew up there. And they were here long before Slantia House was there. I really don't think that.
Is there a sound barrier ordinance?
No, I don't, I don't think there is, I mean, there's a sound barrier on the bypass, it's taller than six feet, but. And that was a state installation, we couldn't have stopped it or required it.
But I thought the zoning was, it's and/or, it's and/or the shrubbery or a six foot tall fence. Because I was with this with my place.
Yeah, the landscape buffer isn't necessarily a complete sound buffer. It's just to provide a kind of softening of the transition between districts. So the landscape buffer says a fifteen foot, fifteen foot wide buffer landscaped with a tree every forty feet and a six foot high hedge or fence. You can substitute other things for that buffer, you can put in a double row of evergreen trees and there's a minimum height of planting, that can substitute for the fence and the trees. So there's, there's options in there, but it's not really a sound barrier as you think of it as a true sound barrier.
Best is it's the fence or the shrub, so they're doing the fence, but they still have to do the trees.
Right.
And this is different than a lot of businesses, we're not talking about, we're not talking about indoor seating and indoor music. We're talking about outdoor, talking about the pavilion. And we, I mean, that's, the outside has already been used there. Like I've been to Slantia once, but it's in the middle of winter and we sat inside and played checkers or something. Anyhow, I know it's very popular with a lot of people and I wouldn't wanna take that away from them. But I think there's got to be a compromise, there's got to be something in the middle. You can't just shove this down people's throats that have lived there their entire life, you've got to, you've got to be considerate.
Come back up, Mr. Nun.
Mr. Smith, quite honestly, this, this is the compromise. We had a, we had a plan back in the fall to build a kitchen, to add food. Because our problem now is we don't get busy until nine o'clock, that's when people start coming toward, I mean, we have people at seven, eight, but we get busy at nine o'clock. And so, again, people think that we're rolling in the dough, but we're not. And so we needed to increase revenue, so the idea was, well, instead of getting busy at nine, we'll add food full time and get busy at five. Because for whatever reason, the food trucks don't do enough to bring in business, so we wanted to add, add food. So we had a plan to add a kitchen and bring food on site. A lot of our neighbors were concerned about the smoker and we were partnering with a specific person, a friend of ours who does barbecue. So the compromise was, we abandoned that plan. We abandoned what we thought would be a very successful plan for our business to add food. Might I add, world-class barbecue by a man that was featured on the Travel Channel for his barbecue. That would've been a great tourist attraction in Georgetown as well. We abandoned that plan, this is the compromise, we've compromised with this plan. And I might add, there was two mentions of neighbors recently, I think in your comments, sir. One was the people at the McKnight Apartments, again, I want to emphasize that I've spoken to Barbara Moore. She's never had a single complaint in the two and a half years that we've been open from a tenant of hers, not, not one. And Mr. Wolf was mentioned, Mr. Wolf was one of the neighbors who was against our plan for, for the kitchen, for the barbecue because he was worried about the smoker. When we decided to abandon that plan and have this compromise, I went and met with Mr. Wolf personally on the same day I met with Mr. Langford. Explained the plan to both gentlemen and they both told me that they had no problem with this plan as it's presented. Now, Mr. Wolf may have changed his mind, I don't wanna say that he's not in favor of this, but I'm just giving you history of how it got to this point. This is a compromise, we've compromised a great deal with this plan. Because we don't think this will be as successful a positive factor to our business as the kitchen would have been.
Thank you, Mr. Nun. Any other questions, comments? I need to entertain a motion or vote then.
I think there's still too many questions floating around up here.
Well, if you have them, ask them.
Well, that we can't get answered tonight. You know, I'm concerned with Mr. Langford and Mr. Perkins about the vote at the Board of Adjustment.
Go back and review it.
Is there some way we can get a, a sound barrier up here?
Or get a sound barrier ordinance?
No, we don't, if we don't have an ordinance, we don't, we can't put, make them put a sound barrier up, unfortunately. That's something the city council is gonna have to take on. And they may in the near future, who knows?
The, the, the noise ordinance, you know, it says nine o'clock. And I understand Mr. Nun's predicament in that.
That's when business picks up.
Business picks up at nine o'clock and he wants his music going then, I, I understand that and I.
The question, the question for me.
In my younger days, I've been there, you know, not going out to nine o'clock. So I, I understand that, but there's still, I would much rather. Would you entertain a motion that we table this for the time being and get some more?
I'm the chair and that'd be up to y'all and then I'd have to vote a vote.
Mr. Smith, is that what you were thinking?
I would be willing to tape, I'd like to table or continue it and get some of these questions answered. Seek some answers from city council or some of their, some of their comments.
I think Mrs. Nun would like to speak.
I'd also like to know, do we need to treat this differently? This, this is not the dead center of B three or the middle of the business district, this is the very edge of it. It's the edge of the business district next to the residential.
That shouldn't matter.
Mitch, I was just gonna say, but I don't think it matters, if it's Zone B three, it's Zone B three.
If it make a big difference if it was a clothing store.
If you lived next to it.
The, the problem we've got here is if the city changes the noise ordinance to four o'clock in the afternoon, it doesn't matter. This has been filed ahead of time, that'll be a city matter and an enforcement matter, that's not our matter.
Right.
If you want a sound barrier, that's fine, you gotta have a requirement for that, we don't, we can't require them to do something we don't have a requirement for.
Can we ask them to do it?
Well, sure, you can ask them to do it, but, I mean, you can ask me to cut my grass too, that doesn't mean I'm gonna do it.
For regional people, I mean, what do you, what do you want?
If we're gonna vote tonight, my vote will be no.
Mrs. Nun, go ahead and speak, please.
Well, I have possibly, so we're talking about building a wall and there's no noise ordinance. And I know you're talking about building a wall on our fence line, but our pavilion, we plan to have that east and west side walled off and so it'll be closed in, what if we made that brick? And I know some people were worried about what it would look like. We were either gonna do brick or do like wood slats, like, you know, a house would be and do wood that way. But brick would be a thicker barrier and I think that might help with the noise a lot and.
Or maybe something you put in that brick that will make it super sound.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know these answers.
We have the existing situation, current situation, we're looking to add a pavilion and that seems to be the agita, is that pavilion. And so if we further soundproof that pavilion, which is the change from the current situation, would that satisfy?
Is that where the band's gonna play in the pavilion? I was gonna say, the band's still gonna play against the wall.
And I wanna mention this as well, right, currently, we have, people go out there into that parking lot. We, there is a picnic table there currently, people go out there and smoke, they gather, that's, you know, when there's a lot of people, that gets loud out there. So I think that the pavilion will enclose that and I think that will help buffer a lot of the noise, I really do. And I'm open to putting, you know, to saying on the record right now that we'll brick that wall so that it will look nice when you see that over the fence, it'll be taller than the fence, obviously. And that way they'll, they can have peace knowing that it will be a thicker barrier for that structure.
Mr. Wiseman, you have a question?
Yes, I was involved one time in, in the construction project of soundproofing a church that had very, very loud noise and the neighbors were complaining and the material, the brick itself, just because it's thicker, doesn't necessarily make any difference, but there are materials that you can use that tend to absorb sound. And so that's a good, good idea, research and find out what you could use.
Yeah, we would definitely.
Fill it with sand.
We could.
Check with Mr. Burris about their concrete block that have.
I have a question for the commission.
Materials.
Just got those styrofoam blocks, right?
I have a question for the commission, so I'll be the first to admit, I don't go to every site, I don't check it out. I couldn't picture their backyard because I didn't realize there was four parking spaces, has anybody else gone back there?
Yes.
Have you, okay. I was amazed that there was four spots back there, didn't know they were back there. I don't frequent the place very often, but I've been there for a few drinks in the past. I think it would be an improvement to what's currently out there. I don't know how often those four spots, my understanding, they get used by the night rentals, which is the tenants next door, which, you know, that's not really public parking, but I think the nuns are gracious enough to let them use it.
Isn't there a garage back there?
There's no garage back there.
There's a cottage and that's our property as well. And it has a small carport to the left of it if you're facing it.
Right.
And so, yeah, that might be what you're thinking of.
Will that stay there or is that coming down?
Yes, that will stay there and there will still be space between that cottage and between our pavilion for cars to enter and exit. So she'll still be able to pull into there and pull out, so, yeah. The pavilion will only be, if you exit the courtyard and walk forward, it will only be about as deep as a car's length. The, uh, pavilion will only be, if you exit the courtyard and walk forward, it will only be about as deep as a car's length. And as wide as the property, of course, with the five feet on each side. So, and, and, I mean, that's, that's, I won't repeat anything.
I'll tell you, I think the responsible thing to do at this point though, is get these questions answered. Let's talk to somebody that, that knows about sound, sound barriers, knows about, uh, sound proofing.
Yeah, but Stephen, our proposal is for primary development, to construct a twelve hundred and forty foot square foot covered pavilion. Not the sound. You know what I'm saying?
Nor do we have anything to do with an ordinance.
So, so you're gonna, so you're gonna take a chance on, on, on Charlie Hoffman going insane?
No.
We know what that is.
All I'm saying is, is from what it looks to me like, we're presented with this. And I understand that, that there are concerns. If I lived right beside them, I'd be the same way.
Well, yeah.
But in all reality is, you know, we are not doing anything about the sound. We're here to talk about their development plan. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I think so.
I would agree with you.
I think, I think, I think all these issues that go with it are part of it.
Joe, a lot of these.
But how, but, but twelve hundred square foot, how many people, I mean, how much more sound are you gonna have? How much more people are you gonna have in there? And that would be something that you all could answer.
Well, he, yeah.
He did.
Right, forty, yeah, forty. You're, but are they gonna be there all at one time?
With this preliminary development plan, do they have to come back to us for a final development plan?
Not unless you require them to come back. So the preliminary, if it's approved, it would be staff level approvals beyond that.
So, but if we ask that, that they have a, a masonry unit of some sort that would absorb better sound, then you could approve that when that comes back or does it need to come back to us? Do we need, uh, like Mr. Smith and I are talking about, table on it till we get that information?
Well, Mr. Wiseman, question I have, all due respect to you and Mr. Smith. Charlie, is it not our job to require or dictate ordinance? We're not here as a commission to make these people jump through hoops to make a sound barrier to do. That's the city council's job.
But it's also our responsibility, like Mr. Wiseman said, to, to protect the, the rest of the community. Not just to guarantee that, that, uh, Mr. Nun, uh, you know, makes a profit.
Well, it, it depends on what we're doing. When we're approving a development plan, our job is to make sure they comply with our development regulations. And if they do, we approve it.
Right.
That's not where we protect the community. Where we protect the community is in the conferences planning, in public hearings for ordinances, zone changes.
Setbacks.
Recommendations, uh, that's, that's in creating, you know, the architecture for our system.
All right.
When we're going over a plan, if they come in, in fact, most places you bring in a plan and it complies, you don't even come to the board. It's considered ministerial only. Staff stamps it and it's gone. Uh, we're already going beyond where the law literally says we're supposed to go. Because most of these things had no place in our regulations.
Correct.
Now.
It was currently written, yeah.
Well, that's all we've got to enforce. We can't enforce one that we think should be written. What we do then is we work to get them to adopt. We hold public hearings, we make recommendations and then we see if they adopt it. I mean, the best example in the world is over the five acre tracks. We've had twenty hearings through the years, made recommendations and it's never changed. We finally got the cluster to go through. But we did that for years. That's how we try to protect the neighborhood. But when people came in with a plan, all they had to satis- satisfy were the five acre track requirements. There was a couple of them, uh, and that's the way it was done for probably twenty years anyway. Uh, we just, we can't enforce things that we think we really ought to have.
Now, Charlie, we can make a request, a recommendation for the city council to adopt.
Oh, absolutely.
A soundproofing ordinance, but we don't have it right now.
And we do that regularly. Staff in, in just regular meetings does that. Uh, we can have a public hearing on a proposed zone zoning ordinance or subdivision reg ordinance change. And come up with text, send it over there. We can advocate for it, but we can't enforce it until they approve it.
Got you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, thank you, Joe. Questions, other comments? Otherwise, again, I need, we need to entertain a motion to do something.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve PDP two nineteen twelve with its, uh, five, uh, um, recommendation.
So motion made by Mr. Wiseman to approve application PDP two thousand nineteen dash twelve. And a second, uh, by Mr. Caldwell. Do we need to take a roll or just a, uh?
The only time you have to take a roll call is if it's an ordinance.
Sounds good, so.
Unless you need to, just to figure out, you know, what the votes are.
So all in favor of this application, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Nay.
So we have one, so we have, uh, one no in Mr. Smith. Everybody else said yes. So, uh, application passes. And Mr. Misses Nun, you can go up there and sign the paperwork. Thank you. And we appreciate everybody coming out today. I hope y'all can be more conservative. Can we take a couple minute break? I think I heard a couple commissioners say they need a break.
In light of, maybe get some change up my shit.
I'll tell you what, they're gonna make some people.
On the agenda is PDP 2019-13 Gulf Town Homes of Cherry Blossom. Phase six preliminary development plan and subdivision plat for Gulf Town, Gulf Town Homes of Cherry Blossom for thirty-two single-family or attached townhomes units located east of Riviera Drive west of Lanes Run Creek northwest of Old Oxford Road.
And Byron Moran had to recuse himself.
Oh, that's why. Thank you. Yes, he did say he's recusing.
So this is a request to, for a preliminary subdivision plat and development plan approval for the next phase of the multifamily area. This was shown as part of the amended master plan for, that was postponed, but this is actually a separate master plan that was approved separately at a later date. It was shown for informational purposes on the other one as well. This area is at the end of Icabana and this is Riviera here where they two intersect. This multifamily area includes all the, all the land essentially from where Shadow, Shadow Creek Path starts to Old Oxford Road. It's, it was zoned separately from the villages Cherry Blossom at an earlier date. It was approved R2 PUD. The single-family areas are one C PUD. R1C is single-family. R2 allows single-family but also allows apartments up to twelve units an acre density. Although this area is approved for, you could build hypothetically apartments here. The master plan showed lot, a lot configuration around this entire area. Here's, here's Shadow Creek Path in the first two phases, or the first phase. Phase two was on Riviera beyond phase two. It extended Icabana and it wraps around and hits Old Oxford over here. The last phase is up here includes some townhomes that face the driving range of Cherry Blossom and also some combination of single-family and duplex lots. So the plan for the, to develop the rest of this entire area is kind of a lot, fifty-foot wide lots.
Joe, let me interrupt you just a second.
Okay.
The plan you got up there is not the one we have here.
Well, this is the overall master plan.
Okay.
Okay. I was just trying to, to summarize how we got to where we are.
All right.
Yeah, you're in the corner.
So I just took a shot of the screenshot of this just to show you what the, what the plan is for this multifamily area and we're approved up to this point. So future development was gonna continue fifty-foot wide lots, combination of either townhomes with a shared lot line or standalone townhomes on an individual lot. The application we have tonight is a continuation beyond phase five. So if you look back, here's the end of phase five. The master plan shows the general layout. Here's, here's the continuation of a street. The master plan actually showed the street coming down and there being an elbow here and it continuing on and then wrapping around and hitting Old Oxford down here somewhere. At TRC, we mentioned that these two carst areas that showed up on GIS, one of our environmental, mentally sensitive lands layer, and we asked them to look at whether extension of the, of the road through here and stubbing out here could be done with that carst area on, which would be a future phase. They came back with this alternative layout and we agreed that we think this is a better layout. So this is what they submitted at corrections and that's what, that's what you're reviewing and looking at tonight. So it's, it's thirty-two lots, fifty-foot wide lot widths, a reduced setback, front setback to twenty feet from the standard R2 setback, which is similar to what's been approved in the previous phases. So this would continue on with what, what has been previously approved following the master plan for this area with the exception of this train, this modified road layout to avoid this carst area. With the previous phase, planning commission did ask them to make the connection to Old Oxford and the improvements to Old Oxford with this phase. So with the next phase six, we think there's justification for not requiring it at this stage. They have, they have to investigate these carst areas off-site, off this phase still and identify kind of if this road late, road layout should be modified a little bit more. In addition, the, the trigger for that required connection is that there, there be at least two connections for, for every, whenever you go over a hundred lots in a multifamily area or two hundred lots, single-family. So this was, they were about at that hundred lot trigger before Icabana was connected. So this Icabana extension was put in 2014. It was after kind of this phase three. It may have been phase three and phase four. It may have been about the same time or a little bit before phase five was approved. But including everything, if, if you, if you say there's two entrances now to, to this area, there's only one entrance from this point on. If you count the number of lots from the one point of, of access on, approving this phase would bring it to eighty-four lots, depending on if you count one of these corners. So eighty-four, eighty-five. So we're still under the hundred lot threshold. So we feel like there is justification for, for not requiring that connection now. Also, we need to coordinate that, those improvements with the lanes run and with what's gonna happen with the rest of Old Oxford. So we are recommending approval with the, with the PUD variances that were approved previously, with the additional requirement that they, they submit the construction plans for the road improvements to Old Oxford as they're gonna eventually occur so that we can go ahead and review those and get those approved ahead of time. So we know what the cost is of them. We know exactly what they're gonna be. So we can coordinate that with future, any future work on Old Oxford. So although we are recommending not making them, make the connection now, we are asking that they go ahead and prepare those, those construction plans for eventual requirement with the next phase. That's all, that's all I had.
Thank you, Joe.
We're recommending approval with the conditions.
Anybody have questions for Joe? Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
The applicant like to speak on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and lady and gentlemen on the planning commission. My name is Glenn Hoskins. I'm a lawyer and a partner of the applicant Gulf Towns of Cherry Blossom. It's a pleasure to be here. I'll make this real short and sweet. We are in a hundred percent agreement with the staff recommendations and conditions and, and as Joe so eloquently explained, it's, it's a good plan. It fully complies with all the subdivision regulations and other requirements and we would simply ask that you give us the approval we've come to ask for. I'm also with Fred Easter. It's our project engineer. So if there are any questions, we'd more, more than happy to answer them. So with that, I'll sit up, sit down.
Thank you. Unless you have, anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody here to speak? Please sir, step up, state your name and address.
My name is Bob Schindler. I live on 230 Icabana and I lived there a couple of years and we've had very bad stormwater drainage issues on the street. And I would like to make sure that in the review of the preliminary plan, based on the subdivision development regulations, that a close look be given to this expansion to make sure that the stormwater management and the drainage issues will not impact the other side close, closer to the existing Icabana. And I know me and many of my neighbors have, have had tremendous problems with this and we just want to make sure that the stormwater is managed correctly and, and not impeded on our properties. And in your review, will you have somebody periodically check the site to make sure they're in compliance with stormwater management plan?
Yeah, I'll have probably Ben speak to that in a second.
Okay.
Can you describe your issues that you have?
Ben, would you wanna come up so we get you on microphone?
I've been out there to some of those backyards.
Yeah, you've been to my house.
Okay.
The problem was all the stormwater came from above me right down to my patio and to my neighbor's house on the corner and it was, he was afraid it was gonna erode his foundation. So the fix that Mr. Krebs and other engineers I talked to came up with was now I have a very big swale in the middle of my backyard, running the length of my backyard and between me and my neighbor. And that's the only way. That's where all the stormwater comes. And I wanna make sure that when they expand, I'm not gonna have this problem 'cause there's no place else for it to go.
Ben, can you explain, is that coming from the areas that's being developed? I mean, is, is it undeveloped now where the water's coming from?
It was already developed, yeah.
Oh, it was developed.
Where the water's coming from now, we wanna make sure we don't get any more.
I've got you.
I can grab the mic if you want.
No, well hopefully we'll.
Speaker allow. What I understand, what I understand out there, you are located somewhere, I can't tell, somewhere right here. This is unbuilt, proposed. You are getting runoff from all the backyards is coming down to yours and then the only way to do anything about that was to divert to the street. My understanding, the way this was planted, the way it was designed and I don't know if Brad was involved in this design initially, but the way I went here, but the way I read, read the plat and everything, every one of these lots should have been drained. Their own water should have been drained toward the street. So everything should have been drained from backyard to front yard, a swell in between houses, which is, which is typical of us subdivisions. I don't know what happened with the grading, but there is a lot of drains coming down. All these backyards seems like it is contained and comes down to one spot. So we are not...
I, I and my inspectors are not out there during home, home grading and how that's done. A lot of times that is, it is typical that each yard drains their own water down between it. So I don't know if anybody can explain, anybody else can explain that?
These, the new development behind his house, is that higher or lower than his lots?
Portion of it is higher. I would, I would imagine when it's designed that that drainage needs to be contained in a swell or contained and either brought to the street or they could run some storm sewer back there to pick up, pick up the drainage. So I...
Fred, would you wanna come up and answer a few questions for us, please? So I guess question I would have, is it the same owner, I'm assuming that's phase five?
Four.
And he's in four? Is it same owner of four that's now beginning to develop six?
Yes.
Okay. Do, can this be then rectified with the new thirty-two lots?
We cannot rectify what's already been done. It has been fixed with a swell. The new phase six will be draining exactly like Ben says. As you said, we take the backyard water and drain it off to the street around the side of the houses. We provide drainage swells on that.
Because I think what I worry about is if you build all those lots right behind this gentleman's house, Mr., I wrote it down, sorry, Schindler, that you may create more problems for and that's what we wanna avoid.
No, we'll make sure we're not gonna do that.
All right.
Not gonna happen.
If, if you look at the general overall topo, everything runs this way.
Correct.
There is a little hill that is in this area that probably comes down here now, but that could be cut down and allowed to go to the street and take it all down to the stormwater management system.
I just, you know, a lot of times I hear the commission, more problems happen as the next phases keep being built. So we want, definitely wanna make sure that Mr. Schindler doesn't have any more problems. We don't wanna add to us, but we don't want to, you know, if there's any way to help.
We will.
All right, that's what I want.
Now, were you involved in the, in his lot being built?
I was involved in the public improvements being built, yes.
Now, was it a design error in the first place or was the design not followed that caused the problem?
No, the lot grading was done and then when the houses were built, I don't know what happened.
Somebody, builder's been in the state.
I don't know. So...
We just don't want whatever happened before to happen again.
Yeah, Ben, how do we prevent, or Joe even maybe, if you can answer that question, how can we prevent the mistakes that were made in phase four possibly from happening again if they should have swelled between each home and it sounds like it's running off to Mr. Schindler's lot now redirected to the street? How can we prevent that from happening in this phase?
I, I would like to ask if Paul will speak on that.
No, sure, come on up, Paul.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the builder.
State your name just for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul Haddix. I'm the, with Haddix Construction. I'm the builder of, of the villas and have been building every home in there. The, yeah, we are responsible for grading and, you know, each house is, is, every house isn't built at once. So homes are, are built individually. Some are built on the front side and then others are built lower. So we try to adjust the grade as the houses are built. And gentlemen, we have been, there has been some that I think Mr. Schindler, that we had to come back and do some further grading. But we do take careful consideration with the grading and we try to manage that water runoff appropriately.
I can't, I can't speak to that. We, we have been called, you guys have called us multiple times during grading. When, if there was a question, hey, we don't, can you give us opinion? We, we will, we'll show up. We'll, we'll help out and look at, look at things, contact the engineer if we need to, to determine that. The only other way to really do this, there's, there's been discussion for a long time about developing a lot grading development plan, which is not being done. And it's done in other bigger, bigger cities, but it is a, it is an intense permitting process and there would be greater fees, more inspectors and all that. So I, I think that discussion is, it's out there, but I don't know how far.
Let's face it, that we're getting big.
But a lot of those homes we did, I don't, you've been out there, there were, there are swales. You know, we do try to manage in between the homes of swales. Some of those, on the back of those homes where the grade, the topography really starts dropping off, you can only gather so much water and try to divert between the homes. And, and, and usually the problem arises during daylooms, heavy, heavy rains. Then that's when you notice it. Mr. Schindler would, it might be like a river.
This past year.
Yeah. You know, it was, it really rose its head last year.
Right.
Because we had a lot of those heavy rains. So typical rains, it's never, you know, we manage it. It's not a problem. You know, but some of these real heavy rains, you know, you know, your downspouts and gutters can't handle heavy rains.
Right.
You know, it handles a typical rain, but you, you know, you, there's, there's at times that Mother Nature will, you know, test and, and overcome what you think is appropriate to handle the management. So, so in, in extreme cases, when, when Mr. Schindler had brought it to our attention, you know, we, we, yes, we had to cut a swell and, but we took care of the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Haddix. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Haddix or Ben? All right, thank you. Mr. Schindler, hopefully does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that it's part of the record now that the stormwater and the drainage plan should be in the preliminary plan of development. And would that be a public record then that homeowners can go down and get a copy of that?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Schindler.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak for or against this application? All right. Any other conversation, comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I do have one comment, actually a question. It seemed like every plan that comes up had some, it had some connection to making improvements on Old Oxford Road and somehow that can just keeps getting kicked down the road every, you know, over and over again. And Old Oxford is suffering terribly. I think we're gonna have to put our foot down here at some point. It's something we gotta...
It's gonna be on this next phase.
Well, it would have to be because we only got sixteen more homes.
Well, no, what happens is a Icabana gets put in. We say, well, they got a second entrance into a place that hasn't terrible connections. I mean, traffic's awful and all these other people that are on Old Oxford just keep suffering.
I might be able to help with that because we've had two other related developments on the dockets now where they were postponed for that very reason. There's a lot of things in the mix that there's no, nothing determined specifically. Like for example, the, the Lexus Way discussion, there's no agreement. That's gonna do a lot, a whole, that's gonna be a major development for that part of Scott County if and when it happens as far as alleviating a lot of the traffic. It's gonna do all that. But there's no, you know, it's in, it's in the talking stage. There's no agreement with property owners yet. The city hadn't found the money for it. So, so we got a lot of things in the mix, talking with the city administration and staff, planning commission. So for all these reasons, we're gonna have to, you know, you're exactly right. We're gonna have to face it pretty soon. But, so that's why we postponed those other two things that were on the agenda for that very reason.
But I think even, even with the, if Lexus Way comes in, that doesn't mean that Old Oxford doesn't need to be improved.
No, but, but the Old Oxford improvements is tied to when we actually make a connection out there. So we're not there yet. And so that's why we're gonna probably face it at the next, next phase that comes up. We're gonna just, by that time we'll have some of these questions answered hopefully.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Yeah. Just much 238 Icabana Drive. I'm a little confused. We built with phase two and they're not finished with phase two, excuse my voice. Where's phase three? Where's phase four? Where's phase five? We're talking phase six now here. I, it's, could somebody explain that to me please?
This is phase one, Shadow Creek Path. Phase two, where it's twelve on Icabana, or on Riviera. This is phase three. This was phase four and this is phase five.
Well, where your phase four is, was our phase two. That's where we built it. Now phase, and that goes all the way to that first where the road isn't continuing around the curve. That, here the, down by that golf course. No, to the right, right there. That's phase, the end of phase two. On the corner there where that new road's coming down is supposedly phase three. So I'm a little confused.
Okay.
Quite confused.
I was gonna say, would the applicant like to address which phases are correct or not?
Let's go with those.
Maybe they know. Yeah, I would think he would know. For Paul, I have no...
Well, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm...
I'm not sure where he lives.
Okay, let me point this out here.
George's question is...
Yeah, that's where we built. Phase, phase one ended about here.
No, no. Now, phase one actually is not part of your homeowners association. It's a...
Well, we thought, we were told phase one ended there. We thought in the beginning of phase two, we couldn't, I am told.
I don't know who told you that. That's not what your deed says. Phase one is up where the, the original townhouses are. They come off of Riviera, the upper side right there. And then phase two going down below. And where you're at, so you're probably phase four or phase five.
That is a little...
Okay. I'm not sure who told you that.
No, I, phase two, this was phase three. We looked at the lot here, purchased that lot here until that's phase three, like the builder.
Plats and everything details like phase five. But...
I guess that was an exact question.
I'm talking to me, you know, trying to help you out.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak, please?
Just a quick question.
Joe, where is phase six?
State your name and address for the record.
I'm Temple Jewett. I live on 1035 Oxford, Old Oxford Road, where that house right up there on the backside. Yeah, right there. What is phase six? Is it all the rest of that or just part of it?
In relation to this, phase six is this street essentially. But the layout has changed to instead of it coming down and making this elbow and turn, the road comes straight through here.
Okay.
So it's this, this street. But, but, so that is that street. And then instead of this stub road being here, it's up here instead.
Okay. So down next to us will be another phase at a later time. Okay.
You're about right there.
Okay. Can I, are there any requirements about barriers or anything like that between the homes and the, between the existing homes and the, and the new, or is that something to...
Yeah, I mean, between, since you're zoned day one and you're outside this development, there's a, there's a fifteen-foot landscape buffer. So they would have to buffer between you, between the back of these R2 lots and then your, your property.
It'd be a fencing requirement too, wouldn't it, for A1, A1? I mean, unless it's...
Yeah, I have to look at the, I'd have to look at the landscape ordinance, but I think it's a six, probably six-foot high fence and a tree every forty feet or a double row of evergreen trees.
And you can always go into planning a zone and it can always give you that information too.
Or they can maintain the, the tree line within that fifteen-foot buffer is another option I think they would have if it's a mature...
Yeah, I would think he would know, for Paul, I have no.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure where he lives.
Okay, let me point this out here.
George's question is.
Yeah, that's where we built. Phase, Phase One ended about here.
No, no, no. Phase One actually is not part of your homeowners association.
Well, we thought, we were told Phase One ended there, we thought in the beginning of Phase Two, we couldn't, I am so.
I don't know who told you that, that's not what your deed says. Phase One is up where the, the original townhouses are, they come off of Riviera, on the upper side, right there. And then Phase Two went down below. And where you're at, so you're probably Phase Four or Phase Five.
That is a little early though.
Okay, I'm not sure who told you that.
No, I, Phase Two, this was Phase Three, we looked at the lot here, purchased that lot here until that's Phase Three, and the builder.
Plats and everything, the details are Phase Five. But, hopefully I have to make.
I guess that was an exact question.
Talking to me, I'm trying to help you out.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak, please?
Just a quick question. Joe, where is Phase Six?
State your name and address for the record.
I'm Temple Jewett. I live on 1035 Oxford, Old Oxford Road, where that house right up there on the back side. Yeah, right there. What is Phase Six? Is it all the rest of that or just part of it?
In relation to this, Phase Six is this street essentially. But the layout has changed to, instead of it coming down and making itself open turn, the road comes straight through here.
Okay.
So it's this, this street, but, but, so that is that street. And then instead of this stub road being here, it's up here instead.
Okay, so down next to us will be another phase at a later time.
Yeah, you're over there, you're about right there.
Okay. Can I ask, are there any requirements about barriers or anything like that between the homes and the, between the existing homes and the, and the new? Or is that something to?
Yeah, I mean, between, since you're zone Day One and you're outside this development, there's a, there's a fifteen-foot landscape buffer. So they would have to buffer between you, between the back of these R2 lots and then your, your property.
It'd be a fencing requirement too, wouldn't it, for A1, A1? I mean, unless it's.
Yeah, I have to look at the, I'd have to look at the landscape ordinance, but I think it's a six, probably six-foot high fence and a tree every forty feet or a double row of evergreen trees.
And you can always go into planning a zoning, it can always give you that information too.
Or they can maintain the, the tree line within that fifteen-foot buffer is another option I think they would have. If it's a mature screen in that area.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on, on behalf? Otherwise, we need a quick discussion. For the record, I think Mrs. Mizell has to go. So if you want to go before we vote, I think we'll still have enough, right? Yeah, we'll have enough. All right, have a good night. So we need a motion?
I move that we approve PSP dash twenty nineteen dash thirteen.
So we have a motion by Mr. Mifflin?
Three variances.
With the variances.
Variances.
Three variances.
Y'all do show twelve, twelve conditions?
Actually, eleven.
Eleven.
Condition number eight was a, this, I didn't strike through condition eight. It was just building for person on lot twenty twenty-one, that's clearly a previous phase, so I approved condition eight.
Okay, so with three variances and eleven conditions. So I have a motion by Mr. Mifflin.
A second.
A second, miss, by Mrs. Mizell. All in, we could do it all in, right? We don't need to, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, application passes.
Yeah, you can leave.
All right, now we can move, keep moving. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is ZMA two thousand nineteen dash sixteen, which is Drake's zone change, zone change request for approximately twenty acres from A1 to B5 and C1, located at the northwest corner of the intersection of McClellan Circle and East Main Street Extended. Thank you for joining us. Go ahead, Matt.
All right. As you mentioned, this is a rezoning request. The applicants are requesting that property that's currently zoned A1 be rezoned to a combination of B5 and C1. The property in question is at the northwest corner of the intersection of McClellan Circle and East Main Street Extended. So as I mentioned, a part of the property is currently zoned A1. There is a, a part, the, pretty much literally the stream bed for North Elkhorn Creek is zoned C1 currently. And then there's a portion of the property that was zoned B2 back in two thousand eight. The site is about thirty-five point eight four acres. As I mentioned, there's fifteen acres that were zoned B2. And the site does currently have access from both McClellan Circle and from East Main Street Extended. There we go. So this is, this is the site that we're talking about. And you've got the, the bypass or McClellan Circle here, here's East Main Street Extended as it comes across railroad tracks. And so it's this parcel here. You've got North Elkhorn Creek on the north here. You've got the, the historic house that I mentioned in the staff report, there's a spring house that's about here and East Main Extended as it, as it intersects with the bypass. This is the, the current zoning on the property. There is a portion here, like I said earlier, that was zoned B2 back in two thousand eight. It was annexed into the city limits of Georgetown at that same time. The remainder of the property remains outside city limits and we would ask that the, the property be annexed should, should the zone change move forward. There's a portion of the property here inside this black, black line that's currently zoned C1 and the remainder of the property remains agriculturally zoned. I wanted to, to point out the, the floodplain, this light blue shade here, so not the orange shaded portions, but the light blue shaded part is, is the, what we, I guess traditionally call the floodplain or the, the one percent annual flood chance area. This area up here with the, the sort of hatching, I believe, is, is the floodway. I guess talk about the difference between those if, if you all, if you all want. But those are mainly the areas that we would ask that the applicant rezone to C1. Just, I guess, for the purposes of our discussion tonight.
Thank you, Matt.
Oh, no problem. So KRS one hundred point two one three lays out the findings that are, that are necessary for us to find in order to recommend approval of a zone change to the appropriate legislative body. For simplicity's sake, I believe that this zone change proposal does satisfy the first condition, that their zone change proposal is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. So we don't necessarily need to consider subsections A and B that are on, on the screen at this time. So my findings are that the future land use map shows that this property is, is appropriate for commercial. And I can, I have that map coming up here in just a minute. The, the comprehensive plan does support having an internal road network supporting those commercial properties that may develop on this site, as it will limit direct access to those existing roads and, and reduce, you know, the number of conflict points that people might deal with on those roadways in future. The comprehensive plan also calls for all creeks, floodways and floodplains to be rezoned to C1. And I did note that the flood, the flood maps have changed since the rezoning that took on, that took place on a portion of this property back in two thousand eight. So I am actually also calling for a part of the property that was rezoned in two thousand eight to be to, to, at this time, be rezoned to C1 because it does lie within that, the floodplain.
Did you point out the part that was zoned in, in two thousand eight?
Uh, yeah. So this, this black outline is, is roughly the, the property in total. And then this area here in, in red is the part that was rezoned in two thousand eight.
Okay, but nothing's, nothing's been done with it since?
Yeah, no, there, there hasn't been any development on the site. I'm not actually even aware of any development plans that have come before the commission since the property was rezoned.
So we're voting on the remainder, the green, greenish part?
Yes, yes. So this is, this is from our future land use map. As you can see, this orangish color here is, or orangish-red color is, is commercial. It was designated as such in the comprehensive plan. There are some industrial properties here to the west, there's commercial properties to the north. So I find that, or at least our findings, when we, when we developed the future land use map here, was that this would be a good transition zone for properties with maybe some commercial and some industrial uses. The applicant is seeking a B5 zoning, which does allow for some light industrial along with retail commercial. So I, I do think that the, the zone that they've chosen is appropriate. I did also want to point out, this is also from our comprehensive plan. You know, we, we do ask that properties be rezoned to C1 for any creek conservation corridors. And like I mentioned before, creek conservation corridors are all the creeks themselves, but also the floodways and the floodplains that are part of those. So that's, that's why we're asking that a part of this property be rezoned to C1. Looking at a rough estimate of, of the acreages involved, currently about almost twenty acres of the site is zoned A1, fifteen acres is zoned B2 and about, you know, almost point nine acres is zoned C1. What we're recommending with this is that a small portion of that B2 property be rezoned to C1. As you can see here, this, where this red line comes in, it's really just this tiny sliver of the B2 property that we would ask be rezoned to C1. And then basically all of this property that lies within the, the one percent flood chance area also be rezoned to C1. This remaining port, I guess this remaining portion that would be outside that area, we, we recommend approval of that to be rezoned to B5. And it can act as a, a transition between the already zoned B2 portion here and the industrial portion, industrially zoned portion to the west. As far as the, the concept plan, generally, a lot of the concept plan, I think, works. Like I mentioned earlier, they, they are proposing an internal road system with lots having access off that, but not direct access to the existing road network. They did submit a traffic study as part of their, their zone change application. And it identifies several improvements that, that would, that would need to be done in order for this to have relatively low impact, you know, at a time of a build out in possibly, or in by twenty thirty-one. Improvements that they identified were left and right de-acceleration lanes at both site entrances. And I can, I can show you where those are here in just a minute. And then they also identified that left and right turn lane additions on East Main Extended, where it meets the signalized intersection of McClellan Circle, would also be needed. Just, and as a note, and I know I mentioned it in the staff report, their traffic impact study did take into account the, you know, the, the future opening of, what is it? Creekside Elementary School on the other side of the bypass. So, you know, I was looking to make sure that, you know, any imminent development was going to be accounted for in that traffic study. There were a, a couple of, of issues that I think need to be addressed. Some of these can be accomplished, you know, further down the line with development plans. But there is a, a stream or a drainage area that's indicated on the concept, that's shown on the concept plan. It shows up on aerial imagery and USGS maps as an intermittent stream, I believe. So we'll, we'll look for any future development plans to handle that area appropriately. I don't think that, that entire area needs to be rezoned to a special district at this time. The, the property does, the, the concept plan shows a Wells Avenue, and I know we talked about this briefly at, at workshop. That's not a street that has, that shows up on any records that we have. At best, I think it's a private driveway that, that kind of serves Hamilton Hinkle and, and maybe one other business along there. So I don't know that it's appropriate for any future development plans to, to sort of plan on also using that, that driveway, unless for some reason it was brought up to, you know, city road standards or something along those lines to, to handle regular, regular commercial traffic. And then we'd also just kind of like to know what the long-term plans are for the historic buildings that are on the site. There are two buildings that are on the National Register. I intended to provide photos of them in, in my PowerPoint presentation, but I could not get the National Register of Historic Places website to cooperate with me when I was putting this together. So those aren't in here. But the, the concept plan does mention that the, the buildings are to be relocated. I don't know if that's, you know, relocated onsite or if they're intended to be moved or if they, I guess, are working with a, a potential buyer to, to handle that issue. But, you know, we, we do, we do like to know what's going to happen with those buildings since they do have historical value. This map I just wanted to include, this is from the two thousand sixteen USGS maps, topo maps. And it does show that sort of drainage area or stream, this, or I guess what they've labeled here as an intermittent stream, kind of coming down. It comes under both roadways, East Main Extended, in the bypass. And actually, it comes all the way down to, you know, Mansion Estates and, and these neighborhoods down here. So that's sort of why we, you know, especially look for that to be treated appropriately. It's not just necessarily a ditch or something along those lines. I don't remember why I included that again. This is, this is the, the concept plan that the applicant submitted. So as you can see, they, they have a proposed entrance here off East Main Extended. And then there's this existing entrance here off of the bypass. You know, there's no, no external road or connections. I really proposed to, you know, significantly impact traffic on that. It's best if that, you know, if those all come to, you know, a designated road entrance so that, you know, if signalization is necessary, that can be handled and there's not a lot of conflict points with existing traffic. I included an aerial photo again. But you can see here that this, this entrance here on the bypass already exists. You know, that was planned for when the bypass was, was created. And I believe there's a, I think there's some sort of entrance here existing, but it, it doesn't show up very well on the aerial photo. So I am recommending approval of this application. We do ask that all the area currently in the floodplain be rezoned to C1, even if it is currently zoned B2. The remainder of the A1 property, I think, is appropriate to be rezoned to B5. We do ask that the applicant request annexation with the city of Georgetown for the, for the remainder of this parcel and that any preliminary development plans in future include the road improvements that they identified in the traffic impact study. So typically with, with a zone change, you all will make a recommendation and then they'll, they'll take that to the, to the city council for final approval. And, and when they go for that approval, they'll provide a legal description to the city. We'd also ask, not necessarily as a condition, but just ask that the applicants provide us with a copy of that legal description just so we can verify that the zoning boundaries will, will follow the floodplain.
Any questions for Matt?
I've got a question. I don't know if it's for Matt or for Mr. Perkins. You had one section backed up to the bypass there that you said the city had already annexed. I thought annexation had to be connected. Is that not right?
Well, the part that has already been annexed, and I can't tell you firsthand, but it should be. What's already been zoned was annexed prior to it being rezoned. So that B2 area that was in two thousand eight or whatever that was, that was, that was annexed when it was rezoned. Well, actually annexed and then rezoned.
But.
But it's, I mean, it's, it's, it was contiguous with, with this part of the city and this part of the south.
Johnson Control, John's Control property down there, it's contiguous there.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are multiple islands in the, in the city of Georgetown though that are still not acknowledged, but not annexed.
Not annexed?
Yeah.
But we don't talk about that, do we?
Okay, but it's, it's connected down here, not across East Main Street.
It's, it's connected down, down here, it's connected across the bypass.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Comments? Mr. Langford?
Yes, sir.
You're up.
Well, I don't have to say much. Matthew said it all.
There you go.
I'll just say for the record, I'm Bruce Langford, here for the applicant with Jonathan Hale with Thoroughbred Engineers. They are taking care of the engineering. I don't think, Matthew, there are any issues with your recommendation whatsoever. We will go to the city council with annexation. And if we are successful in getting it annexed, then we'll ask that it be rezoned by the city. So, and we are in agreement with the C1 zones, with the portion in the B2 over to C1 and the A zone to B5. None of those are any problem, right, Jonathan?
Right.
So if you have any questions about the development concept, what's gonna happen? Why Jonathan said he'd be willing to come and explain it to you.
Any questions for Mr. Langford?
My one question, the same one that Matt had, it's just the, what's gonna become of the, of the house and the spring house? The, the home and?
I don't know, maybe he does.
Jonathan Hale, one ten East Main Street, business address. I'm not an expert on the historical stuff, but I do know that the Drakes have proposals from, from an entity that wants to purchase that. And so there's, there's three different options. It's either keep it where it is and it'll still fit in the B5 zone. You can do something, maybe a museum or something. The next one is.
It may not stay, it may not stay exactly where it is now though?
That's one of the options. They haven't decided, but one of them is to move it about two hundred feet, kind of up the road a little bit on the same property. Maybe, I don't know if it's exactly two hundred feet, but get it up higher on the hill. And then let that, where it's sitting now, let that be developed because it's, it's pretty prime. And then the third option is to disassemble it piece by piece, mark the pieces, then ship it down. There's a, there's a buyer in Nashville that wants to reassemble it and make a music studio out of it, so.
Now, you're talking about the pump house, right?
I'm talking about the, the house house.
The house house, what about the pump house?
That would be my least, that would be my least favorite option. I, I think that's part of Georgetown's heritage.
Right, it's got, it's got a pretty rich history, yeah. So, but there, there's nothing that can necessarily hold it. He, he, he's the, our client, Phil Drake, is the fiduciary of the trust. And so he has to make the decision based on all the options. So that's his decision. I, I don't have any, I'm just telling you what, what information I know.
And the spring house?
Spring house, I don't think anything's planned for that. I think it'll stay.
That could stay. It looked like maybe a roof was proposed awfully close to it, but.
Yeah, it's close to it, but we'll.
You'd make it stay, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
In the concept plan, I will say that it shows a lot of different styles of development. development. Nothing's, nothing's set. It's just to show that close to the bypass, it'll be more highway commercial uses. And then as you transition up East Main Extended, it'll, uh, maybe like an industrial flex space that works in the B five zoning, um, is, is the plan, but there's no developer on, um, you know, that, that has a specific plan and then the development plan would come before you, um, at a later date for that.
Charlie, can we, can we legally specify that the, that the house would remain onsite or? We can't?
That's one of those things we can ask and encourage. No, we, we have zero regulations in that direction. In fact, the last time we tried just to get a bona fide historic district, we failed miserably.
I would hope the public would get involved to encourage that. We don't have that many of them left, uh, especially very old buildings and structures other than downtown and we've lost a lot of them too.
All right, any more questions, comments?
I was driving by that way the other day, my wife and I. She made a comment of how nice it was to have a little farmland right in there still for all the development around it. And she said, "I bet it won't be long." Here we are.
Did you burst her bubble?
I have to go, I'll burst her bubble, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, any, if there's no other comments, I need to entertain a motion.
Motion. Strike through ZMA two zero one nine dash sixteen.
Motion by Mr. Vest.
Second.
And second by Mr. Mifflin. All in favor?
And this would be a roll call.
Oh, this would be a roll call. Thank you.
Sorry, do, uh, just, can we ma- mention the findings or findings in the staff report or something, just so we have it in the motion?
Excellent suggestion. Well, we need to do that every time and sometimes we just forget 'cause we get tired and hungry.
Yeah.
But if you could, adopt the recommended findings in the staff report which support that this is in, uh, conformity with our plan.
So you want me to say it's in?
Just, just, you just said it right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And then, and we'll give you the?
So good, go to roll call. Um, Mr., this is to approve ZMA two thousand nineteen dash sixteen. Approval would be a yes vote. Mr. Wiseman?
No.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
And the chair votes yes. Five to two. So go ahead and step up there and sign. And we just had, we do have a couple more other business. It is nine fifteen, so update previously approved projects. Sure?
All right, yeah. No, no, yeah.
You wanna come with a zero lot lines?
Yeah, you asked us to look at the zero lot line and come up with a two, basically what it, it's, it's looking to solve the, the problem that we have with tri-village where somebody builds to the lot line and then affecting the neighboring property. Um, we looked at a couple options to, uh, address it. Option one was, um, I looked at all the commercial districts. B five, oh, thanks, B five already has a ten-foot side and rear setback, so it's only B one through B four, so we have five commercial districts. B one's neighborhood commercial, B two's our general commercial, then downtown, and then we have a newly created one called community, commercial district. It's meant to replicate downtown like in a new, new built situation. And then B five is more planned commercial park. So option number one would be to, to require a five-foot setback in all the districts besides downtown and B four, which is rep, trying to replicate downtown. That way, if, if somebody wanted to do a zero lot line outside of downtown or outside of the B four district, they, they would have to ask for a variance. So they'd have to do it as part of a development plan approval or go to board of adjustment if it wasn't, if they didn't need a development plan approval. So, option one is just to require the setback, minimum setback, and then they'd have to do a variance to do zero. The other option, we have a clause in our zoning ordinance for commercial districts, just add some language in there, just leave every, the setbacks as they are, and just leave a clause that says, uh, when two adjoining lots are under separate ownership, you need to provide a five-foot setback. You can't build to the line, it has to be a five-foot setback, unless you get an, an agreement from the adjoining property owner, uh, that includes in a maintenance agreement and, and access and construction agreement and a maintenance agreement. So, it just basically leaves everything the way it is, but just adds that language in there so we can tell them, hey, you can't, it's zero setback, but if you don't, if you don't have a agreement of the neighbor, if you don't own the other side of the line, you need to get an agreement with the neighbor or you can't.
So quickly, with option one, is it saying that we are automatically then doing a five-foot setback on everybody and they would then have to come to us? If, let's say it was, um, I'll use Paul Ekadix as an example. Now, that wouldn't be, that's townhomes.
In commercial, yeah, in commercial, outside of downtown.
Which one you feel, Charlie, less muddies the water?
Well, I just think it's kind of ironic. That's kind of like adding condition number seven, uh, to the ordinance, you know, where we said, "Go to the neighbor." And, and even though we had some arguments that we shouldn't do that, I think this is a situation where it would be appropriate, because if they do take care of that, again, as, as Joe says, by agreement with maintenance and whatnot, I can't imagine that really being a problem for us. Uh, the difficulty is now that there is no provision for that kind of agreement, so you have the neighbor bearing some of that burden. So either way, under these proposals, the neighbor doesn't bear a burden. And it's almost as though you could really have both, because you can have one or with the agreement, uh, like I said, it isn't an or, it's, it's and, it, you have two options.
Well, if you do option two, um, I think two, unfortunately, and Mr. Langford's still here, you get in that situation where you gotta have both lot owners agreeing and establishing a?
But if they don't, then they go to five-foot setback.
That's right, then they go to five-foot. Uh, and at that point, nobody's bearing the burden with the other and we got ten-foot in there.
Yeah.
Uh, plus whatever landscaping and whatever's required.
I'm open to what y'all want. Option one or option two?
Let's say two.
Or, or three. You've got nothing.
I, I mean, I think, I think because of previous applications, we do, I think, need to have one or the other. I really don't think we need to do nothing.
Do we have any B four going right now?
Yeah, or any of them, is Amerson B four? Amerson Farms is the only B four being developed.
Okay.
They've got that coffee shop under development.
But that's being developed by one person.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in that case, he could, he could do, yeah, the zero lot line. He's not doing it, but. Yeah, the, yeah.
I mean, just like in front of Kroger where you've got, uh, Starbucks and Mod Pizza and Verizon, but one person developed all of those.
Right.
And they've got a zero lot line, but same person developed it. Out on Connect the Road was a completely different animal.
Yeah, just a different animal.
Yeah. So I, I think two would suit our needs a little better.
We need a motion to adopt one or to recommend?
Well, we've gotta do, we've gotta hold a public hearing on this, so I wanted to just get your feedback and then it'll come next month.
I'm okay with option two as well, so.
So, so if it, Mr. Chair, that, if that's the consensus, we don't really have to have any action at all, just simply instruct staff, this looks to be the one that consensus supports, come up with public hearing and the language for next month and?
Mr. Wiseman, are you okay with option two, Byron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yep.
You okay with that? All right, it sounds like general consensus, option two, so run with it, Joe.
Okay.
The only other thing I've got on here, so we can all get out of here, 'cause gosh, it's late. Um, I'm gonna need, read for the record what was discussed at work, workshop, but I want to put it on the record, recorded as the memorandum. Uh, at the planning commission workshop on April eighth, two thousand nineteen, Attorney Bruce Langford requested the revocation of the plat recorded at the Scott County Courthouse in Cabinet Seven, slide two thirty-eight. Upon a motion by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Wiseman, the planning commission unanimously approved the revocation of the plat in accordance with KRS one hundred point two eight five. Is that enough detail on that particular per, property? Okay.
Because it tells precisely which plat it is and that it is revoked.
Cabinet Seven, slide thirty-eight.
And the rest of those things will follow in the plat.
So that was passed on Monday, but we wanted to read it for the record. And then the only other thing I had on here is, I don't know if Michaela wants to talk to this, she, she, on each, in front of each and every one of you is the, um, training opportunities for two thousand and nineteen. So if you're short on training hours, I think it's eight per year, or per two, every two years, uh, make sure you get it in. Mr. Vest, of course, you'll be one that needs to, and I think I may need some, but probably all need to ever see.
Some of the local ones, but I included the, the comprehensive last six thousand part.
So if you don't, if you're not sure, call Joe and he'll tell you if you're short. Any other, uh, information, Joe, that we need to talk about?
Nope.
All right, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Just break down the hammer.
Have a, have a good, I keep forgetting that, I keep forgetting.
You're light, Doug.